All right, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. And for those that are on the computers, if they want to talk about a particular subject that we're talking about, if you could indicate it on the chat box and then we'll let you in because everybody's on mute unless you notify us otherwise. And thank you for that. Form a applications, we'll go to that first.
Okay, we had one for North Quincy Street. I believe all of you got a copy of the plan and the application in your packet.
And we have this one explained, this one threw me through.
Are there any questions on it? It's a, I can read it off to you so you know what we're talking about.
Well, I do have the questions on that because I'm not sure why did they create slivers of property? So now you can't use lot A or lot B. They, it doesn't, it says that they're doing it to give them legal frontage.
Well, the problem, as I see it, is that those little slivers are in Brockton and they're not in Abington. So I presume what they're going to have to do is have signed by us and also signed by the city of Brockton. So in reality, the frontage, although it's there, it's a piece of land that's in the city of Brockton. So that's why that B and C are there. So for what, what we're doing is we're doing what is in Abington and not what's in Brockton, but it shows on the plan.
How does lot, but lot B, now they're, they're not just, they're segregated. It's a completely different lot. So lot A would have to get an easement of, to be able to drive over lot B to get to the street when they need an easement?
I am sure they're going to Brockton and having Brockton attached to take those two pieces of fossil and break them apart.
That part, that's the only part that makes sense.
Right.
I've still not sure, I've never, you know, I just don't think we've ever seen one where it's been divided by towns.
Well, normally we don't have, well, we had a little bit of that situation when we had the, it wasn't subdivision of land, but we had the similar problem on Rose Place, if you recall, where part of the land was in Whitman and part of it was in Abington.
So are they just creating lot, lot A and D? I don't get it. Are they just creating lot A and D?
I don't know.
Would be nice if someone was here to explain it to us.
Yeah.
You want me to try to call the applicant?
If you want to.
It's up to the board.
Ahmad?
Yeah.
But to me, it looks, that's what it looks like to me, that they're just creating lot A and D, but.
Right.
And I would assume they're going to Brockton to add those little slivers
Yes.
to the lot A and D.
That, that's what I think they're doing.
But what, what is this little other, the other one?
That, that must.
Little blocks in the front?
Yeah.
I don't know why they did this. Unless that was always there, I don't really know that.
Yeah, but was this, where did these two lots come from? Part of, part of Lively Stone's Christian Center was a part of that? I, I don't get it.
No, I think it was, you know, they've got that house that's really close to the road. You remember that site? You got the church and then you, yeah.
That's not it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's further down the road.
Oh, no, I mean, I know what you mean. This is the store, it's like the dry cleaning place, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. And these are lots in between that, between the church and that.
Well, my question was, is this a lot line that goes right in between the Dunkin' Donuts building? Where it says Lively Stone and then North Clear LLC? That building right there is the Dunkin' Donuts building.
Yeah, right.
So is that a lot line that goes right through the middle of the building?
I don't know what you mean.
Where it says Lively Stone?
Line that goes to one of the buildings. I'm not sure if it's the Lively Stone Center or if it's the Dunkin' Donuts.
I don't know whether that's actually where the church is or not.
That rectangle is the Dunkin' Donuts building.
It is, huh?
Yes.
Liz, am I on, am I on audio?
Is that you, Dave?
It is.
Yeah, you're up.
Maybe I suggest that at least in the future, have the engineer send a copy of the plan as a PDF. So you can either email it to me before the meeting or you can put it up on the screen. So I could, you know, take a look at it and give you my honest assessment. But they should be able to send you a PDF that we can put up on the screen.
We can do that for the next meeting if everybody's agreeable to that.
Yep.
Yeah, sure.
Can I do that?
I have a couple of other quick notes.
Okay.
One, it's not Norwell State Park.
No, that's, I saw that too.
And the second, Brockton Edison doesn't exist anymore.
Well, on some plan somewhere, I may say Brockton Edison Company.
Yes.
The, the other thing is, is that we only have so many days to sign this thing, so. The question is tonight, then, do we deny it? And because if we don't act on it, then they don't give us an extension. We won't have another next month.
How many days though, is it, is it 90 days for an A and R or 60?
Twenty.
How many?
Twenty, thank you, David.
Yeah.
Twenty or 21?
So I guess the motion might be, unless we can get ahold of someone to explain it tonight, is to deny it and have them resubmit it.
Do, do you want me to call somebody now?
It would be good.
Okay.
And I mean, there are some things on it such as a Norwell State Park. I don't understand why that would even be.
Oh.
I don't know where they got the, I would think that would be Ains' Norwell State Park.
Yeah, it seems Norwell.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I noticed up in the upper left-hand corner of the plan, it's, their intent is to combine A and B are to be combined and C and D are to be, to be combined. So we're not looking at a separation, we're looking at a.
Is this Mr. Zachary?
Join, a merger.
Hi, my name.
Thanks.
Well.
You see that nowhere on the upper left-hand corner?
I know, I see that, I looked at that originally, but I didn't realize that that line that you're showing is going through the Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, that other line, oh.
According to Rick, that's Dunkin' Donuts. Where Dunkin' Donuts is, that's like a little strip mall. And I, I did not know that, so that just adds a little more confusion.
Okay, guys.
Yeah.
I have Mr. Zachary on the phone, I'm going to hold him up to the computer and you guys can ask him your questions and then he can answer them.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
How about have him sign into the Zoom meeting?
Could you sign into our Zoom meeting? Okay, he can't do it right at this moment.
All right, I suggest we just deny it and let him, let him resubmit it.
I'll second it.
Okay, you sure you can't, if, if they pass this over and could you zoom, could you dial in a little later? Okay, so would you agree to continue this? They're, they're ready to deny the plan right now because they need some questions answered.
And I tell you guys, I really hate these Zoom meetings.
Well, Bob, I have groups meetings at work now, so we can meet, you know, and on, on work group. It's, it's crazy how many varieties of this there are now.
I hear the new normal one more time, I'm going to scream.
Well, you can't work from your house.
No, it's a little difficult for that for me.
And robots, robots into the field and do your work?
Yay.
Well, sadly, some things should be changed on the plans, but I don't know what it said down the registry of deeds. I would think that they want to look at the registry of deeds and see if it's Ains' Norwell Park or Winston.
Yeah.
Well.
It needs to be revised anyway.
There's only Board of Appeals agenda, was there one? Remember seeing one?
Did not see one.
I was curious and I don't know if any of you know, Spruce Street is on their agenda and I was curious what variance they need, if any of you guys know.
Yeah, we, we do. I remembered at the last meeting we discussed it. Liz made it.
Talk about it when the, when it comes up.
Let them.
Or you could unmute Mr. Riley and you could ask him.
Well, we'll be doing that in about a second. I was sort of waiting for Liz to get those. But we'll go to 605 Public Hearing, Special Permit and Site Plan Approval of 286 Spruce Street, Continued. And if you will put Sean on and anyone else at least if you put on.
All right, sorry, guys, they're going, he's going to try to, he's never done Zoom before, so he's going to try to log in at some point and I told him.
The problem's going to be, Liz, is that he probably needs, he probably needs someone from home going to be involved with it because there's a lot of questions.
He, he started kind of freaking out on me when I said you were moving to deny it. So I, if you, you guys can have that conversation with him when he.
Okay, great.
All right. All right, so I'm sorry, where are you now?
Unmute Sean so that he can speak on, on 286 Spruce Street.
Good evening, gentlemen, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Liz, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Sean Riley of 500 Washington Street with me tonight. And the reason I'm wearing a mask, because I am within six feet of Glenn the Point and Glenn the Point Jr., who are also wearing masks. We are here for the continued hearing of 286 Spruce Street in Abington. Also on board with us tonight are our engineers, Eric Diaz and Stephanie Holman from Strongpoint Engineering. They are, they are also both zoomed in separately. Strongpoint Engineering in my office have submitted an updated revised site plan based on some of the input that we received at the last hearing for this project. We listened to some of the neighbors input, the planning board, your town engineer's input. And in doing so, we've now revised the site plan and provided a list of updates that I'll go over briefly and then a little more detail. We have reduced the number of units down to seven units. That allows us to increase the setbacks or to move the building farther away from some of the side lot lines. We've also added landscaping in front of each unit at the suggestion of the town engineer, increase some of the landscaping buffers and enhance some of the privacy. We moved the dumpster from over near the Keating side of the property to the far right side of the property, which is basically forest, forest and wetland farther into the woods. We moved the hydrant from the right side to the left side and the fire department has approved that location with us. We confirmed the distance between our septic system and Mr. Keating's well. Our septic system is about 125 feet off of Mr. Keating's side lot line and we're required to keep our septic system 100 feet from his well. So we're already 125 feet off of the side lot line, so we do comply. We actually couldn't locate, there wasn't a well permit on file with the Board of Health, but with some extra help and our engineers were able to find a septic system plan that referred to a well in Mr. Keating's property and it's well beyond the 100-foot mark as I just mentioned. We also, the new subdivision, sorry, the new site plan show the proposed location of the community mailbox, which the postmaster of Abington has also submitted that, sorry, also approved that. We, I know there was some discussion where some people thought a traffic report might not be necessary, others were curious. So we went forward and paid about $5,000 to hire a professional traffic engineer company to do a traffic impact assessment report, which we've also submitted to the board for their review prior to this meeting. And we'll go over that in a little bit more detail. And in doing so, we also reduced our lot coverage down to 35.3%. So essentially 65% of the property will be grass, lawn, vegetation, trees. We also updated some of the evergreen choices at the suggestion of the board and the town engineer. And Strongpoint has also updated the drainage calculations now that we have also removed part of the driveway at the suggestion of the board. So a lot of updates and I think some, a lot of great improvements. And Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'd like to try to remember how to share my screen and go over some of these details with you. If that's all right with you guys.
Please do.
All right, let's see if I can do it right. So, okay, hopefully you can see the assessors plan right now. Is that what you see?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so just again to acclimate everyone once again where we are and where we've been. This is the property, the locus property on the northern side of Spruce Street, highlighted in yellow. You can see the land out to the north or up above it is the Naval Air Station property, Union Point. To the left is a paper street that's not built upon and to the south is Spruce Street. An aerial view of the same area shows, again, this is Spruce Street heading this way to Rockland. This is the other part of Spruce Street here, so you take a right and head to Rockland. This is where we're proposing, I've superimposed approximate size of the building. This is Mr. Keating's house. His house is set back, sit back approximately 300 feet as with this property. And these are all the remaining houses on Spruce Street that we discussed earlier. This again was a reflection of some of the thought process that we went through to show when we were trying to say what would fit on the property and what, what kind of orientation. We looked at the jointed building where it kind of had a bend in it. We looked at one longer nine-unit building. We looked at the potential of placing a few two-unit buildings. And this is just an example of where they could be located, but there'd be obviously more spread out with appropriate parking and all. And the net result was, as we have shown and as submitted, is now the seven-unit residential building. And this is a copy of the Strongpoint site plans that the board now has and has hopefully had a little bit of time to review. Just going ahead to page six of the site plan package. Just to point out again, this is the entrance. This is all private property, it's not a public road. It's a private condominium complex proposed. Traffic would come in, a resident would bear to the right around this island and there would be parking. Each unit has a garage space and a space in front of the garage, much like any residential home. So there's two spaces within the unit, in front of the unit or inside in the garage. And then there's additional guest parking spaces in these two areas here. This was also suggested by the town engineer. As I mentioned, the hydrant is now, it was on the right side, it's now here on the left side. The dumpster has been pulled from this area over to the far side here. It'll be surrounded by a screen, screen fence and by evergreens. And then the mailbox was put right here with a pullout area. So the postman can come in, the post officer can come in, pull around and then just turn around right here in that area and leave the property. So he's safely off of Spruce Street. It also allows our residents to pull over as they come back home from work and to grab their mail. So a number of things have been incorporated. If you recall, there used to also be a return driveway that cut through here. That was eliminated as part of this, so we enlarged the landscaping island. And as you can imagine, when you drive down Spruce Streets, you can't see this building. You're, and even when you turn down the driveway, the first thing you're going to see is the landscaped island and the trees until you kind of turn the corner and enter your appropriate garage. We also, if you might note, we've added the landscaping in front of the building right in here in these couple of areas there. What was a fence at the bottom of this slope here behind the Korea property, we have removed the fence and instead of putting a line of evergreens up here because frankly, a fence at the bottom of a slope doesn't do much good, but evergreens at the top does a lot more. Mind you, there already is a, a number of, a large area of trees in the Korea backyard anyhow as an existing buffer, but we are adding to that with the use of the slope and the use of well-planted evergreens. Also behind the building is a large backyard area. It is cleared all the way to the fence line out through the rear. So this backyard area, and I know Mr. Wrangler asked about this before and I apologize, I wasn't ready for the question, but I am now. It is about 40 feet to 70 feet deep of open green space, of open yard area for the residents to enjoy in any way they might see fit. And as you know, we have basically a tree-lined driveway. We are not touching this Roseland Street, it is just a natural buffer between properties. This being the O'Connor property over here, this being the Korea property, this being the Yakabuchi House over here and Mr. Keating is about somewhere over in this area. So a number of enhancements and improvements based on a lot of the feedback that you gave us. In addition, Strongpoint submitted updated drainage calculations to show that we are not increasing any sort of stormwater issues. In fact, we are improving the stormwater issues, not, not increasing any water going to any a gutter at all. In fact, are reducing it in most cases, most types of storms or not going anything above where we are. This, this stormwater management calculation book is 101 pages long. I will not bore you with it, but it is very detailed. And if there are any specific questions, again, we do have Eric and Stephanie from Strongpoint on board tonight. And just to reflect though, in a general drainage issue question, this is the existing topography of the existing land. And these bars here show that the land flows in this direction. So when it rains, any stormwater that doesn't get absorbed by the ground flows in this direction, towards the Korea property, towards the Yakabuchi property, some goes out onto Spruce Street. And our proposed project would now collect all that. Anything, any rain that hits the roof will be collected and piped underground to this underground pipe, which will run down towards the retention pond. Any, any rain that hits the parking lot here will go down to a catch basin, which again will be collected. So all that water that was moving towards Korea and going down the slope towards Yakabuchi will now be collected before it even gets there. And it'll be brought into the retention pond that's on our property where it will percolate into the soils. Anytime there is any sort of overflow, which would be on a rare occasion, any overflow would flow out to the street, which it normally does now, but it'll be less than what normally occurs now. So again, all of this would be an improvement to what currently exists. We also, I mentioned, hired a traffic engineering firm to review the proposed project and any impact it might have, any suggestions they might have with Spruce Street. And they found that it was a very de minimis impact, as I know some of the board members assumed it might be. But we do have it now in writing, it's a 28-page report, starting with, again, their overview of where the site is, and this is Spruce Street heading towards Rockland, this Salem Street in Rockland. On their introduction, they basically did traffic counts on Spruce Street to get a count of how many cars per hour travel either westerly or easterly on Spruce Street and counted that up and made calculations. Now, they also took into account that they made these counts in January, which is on average lower than normal traffic than other months of the year. So to provide a conservative analysis, the traffic volume data was increased by a factor of 1.01 to reflect an average month condition and not January's actual numbers. Additionally, they acknowledged that COVID-19 has diminished the actual number of counted traffic nowadays. So they increased their counts by a factor of 1.2 to address the COVID numbers. So they wanted to get a more accurate and frankly, more conservative number to, to base their, their report on. And in doing so, they also looked at the, any, the history, historical data available from the state over a five-year period of 2013 to 17, which is the most recent data available. There were no reported crashes in the vicinity of this property. Then they went and looked as far down as Salem Street, where they found a minor crash rate, 2.51 crashes per million vehicle miles traveled, which is lower than MassDOT statewide rate. And then did their calculation as to what the expected traffic addition would be based on seven two-bedroom units on this one and a half acre property. And during the most busiest time of day, the morning rush hour from eight to nine AM or the afternoon-evening hour, you would expect to see three cars leaving our property during that hour in the morning. So maybe one every 20 minutes and three cars returning during the hour of four 15 to five 15. There are again, maybe one every 20 minutes. So it is de minimis, the increase. In fact, it's about a 2.9% change in the volume of traffic on Spruce Street. They also then looked at safety of the view. When you get, when you're leaving our site and you look left and right on Spruce Street, they require 270 to 280 feet of viewing distance. We have over 500 feet of viewing distance. As anyone knows who lives on Spruce Street, it's a very straight, straight, very flat area. So in that regard, it was very, a very safe area. And then finally, they looked at parking. We proposed 21 parking spaces and we showed 21 parking spaces. The town of Abington requires 17 minimum parking spaces. And the Institute of Transportation Engineers for a seven-unit two-bedroom complex would suggest you only need 12 spaces. Again, we have 21, so we exceed that also. And yet, everything is set 300 feet off of the road. So the conclusion, if you don't mind me reading, "Based on a review of the proposed project, an estimate of vehicle trips to the site would result in an increase of approximately 3% of the average daily traffic on Spruce Street. Our review of MassDOT records indicates no crashes occurred within the vicinity of the proposed site driveway location between 2013 and 17. Based on ASHTO guidelines, adequate site distance is available, looking right along Spruce Street. Site distance looking left would exceed ASHTO guidelines if the existing shrub located at the east end of the site is trimmed, which it has been. The proposed 21 parking spaces is sufficient based on the town of Abington zoning bylaws and review of ITE peak parking demands. And based on review of the information contained within this assessment, the proposed residential development is not anticipated to have a significant impact on the safety and operations of Spruce Street or the surrounding roadway network." So a very positive report from a professional traffic engineer. And additionally, we hired our engineers to check the fire department's turning radius. And again, it confirmed that using the longest piece of apparatus they have, which is their ladder truck, we had rounded the corners of the island, as you may recall, so that there is room and extra wiggle room. We actually widened the driveway from 12 feet to 15 feet. So it is fine for the trucks to get around without having to do five-point turns. The chief was actually more concerned about the ambulance and wanted to make sure that he basically liked the idea of having extra guest parking spaces. So people didn't try to create a parking space where one wasn't and potentially block any other traffic. So this is, this site plan does not create any concerns in that regard. So I want to thank Strongpoint for all the work that they've done with this. And I know the board, I submitted my special permit reasoning and presentation in writing to the board and hopefully had time to review that. I would like to do a little summary towards the end, but I thought what we could do now, and I, again, I don't like stepping on Dave Johnson, is Dave Johnson, who is the, from Norwood Engineering, the Towns Consulting Engineer Group, submitted a review letter based on our most recent site plan package and all the information that I just reviewed in brevity. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, but it might be helpful if, if Dave could go through. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, but it might be helpful if, if Dave could go through this letter. And I have added some notes or responses from my clients, so that the board is aware of what items have been addressed and how they've been addressed. And then, as I said, after we're done with this, in any Dave's comments, I would like to wrap up. Would that be work?
Fine, David, uh, if you don't prepare to do that now, that'd be great.
All right, um, I'll just go through each of the comments and summarize whether there was an adequate response. Um, or whether or not there was additional comments uh, that needed to be corrected. And I guess Sean will talk about um, how they've addressed them or how they will address them. Uh, very quickly, number one was just a general comment I like to make. When projects that are submitted are complete and well-prepared, which this project was. And I'll speak for Sean, he has no comment on that. Um, the second one was one of the sheets needed to be signed by professional land surveyor to um. Certify the existing conditions plan and as well as the proposed building setbacks. On the proposed site plan met zoning requirements. Uh, they have done that uh, as requested. Building plans for the actual structures. Need to be confirmed that they meet the most recent amendment to the zoning bylaw. Reg, regarding plans being uh, consistent with the historic and a nature of, of the town, an architectural nature of the town of Abington. Uh, Sean, you can talk about that.
But we have submitted those plans, I believe the board has them, the original plans show the eight units, obviously we're at seven units now, but the plans are still the same.
And the planning board will need to make some type of determination as part of any action on the project to determine that. Those plans are in fact, what was intended by that section of the zoning bylaw. Um, site plan of parking, without going through the entire letter, I think, of the entire comment. Think Sean has summarized um, the changes that we had suggested in our previous uh, review. And that was removing some of the spaces up against the building, replace, replacing it with landscaping to reduce the amount of impervious. To uh, create these um. Satellite, if you want to use that word, satellite parking spaces uh, within the landscaped island. As well as to eliminate the uh, driveway cut through. But in, through the island, which created a more cohesive landscaping uh, element of this project. That was uh, I combined it, uh, comment one and two with that summary. And I think Mike's, um, think Sean's gone over that uh, in pretty good detail.
Oh.
Uh, item number three, we suggested the mailbox be moved. Previously, it was too close to the intersection with people uh, parking to pull out the mail and having a car come in. And rear-end a car waiting to uh, get the mail. It's been removed remotely and a turnout has been provided as we, we requested. They look at, and so that comment's been addressed. The retaining walls, it seems to be a little confusion here. In Sean's comment, he says that the wood guardrail conforms to the building code. I think our comment related more to uh, wall protection for walls that are ret, retaining walls that are four feet or greater in height. Uh, the building code requires some type of fall protection and. Uh, rather than get into where or where that isn't, the building inspector is going to, I need to weigh in on. Uh, where fencing is going to be um, needed. I don't think that a wood guardrail is adequate to deal with fall protection. Uh, while it might be for automobile, but for persons, um, I think that needs to be looked at as part of any building permit plan.
Can I, can I comment? I, I, I agree with Dave, we certainly will run it all by, everything has to go by the building inspector. Um, but it was noted to us that in the International Building Code, it didn't specifically address this issue. Um, or require, I should, it didn't require fencing this issue. And we looked around and as I mentioned in my comments, if you go to the town hall library, there are wooden guardrails literally next to the sidewalk. With a drop-off there and there is no fence. Our guardrail is actually separated from the parking area by about a ten-foot lawn area, so it's actually set back even further. Um, but we don't have any objection to Dave suggesting that we run it through the building inspector, because that will be necessity nevertheless at the end of the, a, as the project comes towards completion.
Well, well, primarily, you need, you, you would only need those guardrails if it was, if it was along a walking path. Uh, a, as for egress. That's where they, you know, if you had, if you walk along the side of the building and the sidewalk with the driveway dropped off from the sidewalk. Uh, you would need a, you would obviously need a guardrail or there, a human-sized guardrail. But I agree with Sean that if it's, if it's, you know, if it's a, away from the walking path by more than four feet. Uh, there wouldn't be any reason for anything other than you just don't want cars to end up in the drink.
Right. We'll double check that when the time comes for our inspection for occupancy.
All right, on landscape and lighting, they've provided some additional uh, parking, excuse me, um, lighting in the parking areas. As Sean's noted, uh, the lighting complies with dark sky policies and uses a New England-style lampposts. The comment about the buffer zone was they had previously proposed white pines as um, lining the sides of the property. Uh, from previous reviews of other projects, I remember Wayne, I think, making some comments that. White pines, while they may be suitable when they're first planted, that over time, the lower parts of the uh, plants. Uh, disappear and become brittle. So we suggested that they look at something that's a little more, has a little more longevity, is serving as a buffer. Uh, I think Wayne uh, can probably weigh in on that best as to whether or not their plant palette is uh, acceptable for. Species and spacing to accomplish uh, the buffering that they anticipate. Same thing with uh, the spacing. That should be addressed by um. By the board as to whether or not they feel that that's acceptable. Number four, the privacy fence. Um, they've noted that in terms of size and location. And as Sean mentioned, they've replaced a portion of it with. We, uh, landscape screening along the edge of the driveway at the, at the top of the slope. Roof runoff has been uh, clarified that the. Areas to be, to be drained are, are shown and collected and discharged into the. Infiltration area, so that's been resolved. Zoning number one was just a housekeeping uh, comment about uh, clarifying some discrepancies in tables to plan. Uh, probably the most important here is documenting for the record. How the project meets what the board has used in the past to evaluate requests to exceed lot coverage. I know Sean put together a uh. A fairly detailed. Submission at, at the previous meeting. But uh, I've put in my comments, eh, as I see them. To provide the board with some guidance as to whether or not the plan does or doesn't meet these requirements. Uh, the drainage di, design is extensive in terms of controls. I don't feel that there's any uh, additional significant impact based upon uh, the additional impervious. Area and, and lot coverage, it's um. Very, very uh. Consistent and addresses all of the storms uh, that are typically required by DEP's. Stormwater management handbook. Sean, can you go back to that summary?
Good summary.
The comments that I was talking about. They were highlighted.
Oh, the, of the special permit?
Yeah, yep.
Oops, sorry. There you go.
Go back a little more.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yep. So I was talking about how the stormwater design has extensive controls. The controls are consistent with DEP's stormwater regulations for all stormwater events. And it adequately provides for the small amount of additional lot coverage in the proposed development. The impact on the reduction in open space on abutting land units. Um, the proposed project. Is able to meet or exceed all the other development requirements of the zoning bylaw. Despite this uh, small increase in lot coverage. And in general, with the changes uh, to the, to the uh, buffering along the perimeter and the reduction in units, uh, they've met. Uh, the intent of this uh, standard that the board's been using. In terms of the impact increase of number of vehicle trips from additional space allowed by the granting of special permit. As Sean noted, the number of units has been reduced. Uh, a full traffic analysis by registered professional traffic engineers been submitted. Uh, it appears to be thorough and documents um. This, this standard's requirements, I would defer to Bruce, who has had a hundred years of experience with. Traffic analysis to weigh in on uh, the findings of that study. Okay, Sean, you want to move up the page? The stormwater comments that substantiate my uh, opinion on the first special permit. Uh, standard. It is addressed under the stormwater requirements in terms of uh, changes and amendments. Uh, we asked for a swale and stone trench drain along the property line. To capture water coming down the three-to-one slopes, which were directed towards an abutter. They've provided that, so they're just that comment. Spot charts on the southerly end of the emergency overflow have been provided uh, to document. The drainage system and any impact on Spruce Street. They've provided uh, a. Connection to the groundwater in the basin to accommodate any runoff during frozen ground conditions. Or uh, the, the inability of the bottom of the basin to infiltrate stormwater. That's been revised and provided. Details for the soil materials for the basin are provided to document that it's acceptable soils to infiltrate. Uh, the. Anticipated runoff going into it. Number five was. Resolution of in, some inconsistencies and there are several that remain. Uh, there are a couple left to be addressed, but they are uh, minor comments that would not. Uh, prevent the board from taking action on this project. Some spot elevations have been provided as requested. Number seven, we've requested that closed drainage calculations. These are calculations that show that the pipe sizing and the catch basin uh, sizings are adequate. To handle the, the flow, uh, that's been provided and we've reviewed those. Number eight was providing some additional. Information on how they calculated runoff. Uh, that's been provided and reviewed, and we find that that's been adequately addressed. Number nine, additional calculations have provided to document. Are they complied with items three and four of the DEP's stormwater checklist? Number ten is a minor housekeeping uh. Comment regarding changing the address of the project in one of the documents. As I indicated, above, the special permit has been revised to reduce the amount of re, of uh, coverage. From thirty-nine point seven percent to uh, thirty-five point three percent. This has been accommodated by reducing the number of units and the elimination of some of the driveway surfaces. There were a few additional comments under the previous review, and I think uh. A few additional comments as a result of our re-review. The first one has been addressed, we suggested that based upon Mr. Keating's request that the. Well on his property be located. It appears that adequate information's been developed by the applicant's engineer to document. That it's not within a hundred feet of the proposed septic system, which is the requirement of the state sanitary code. Uh, the project, the location, uh, excuse me, the traffic report. Appears to be adequate for the scope of the project. However, we note that in their recommendations, they do suggest a trimming or removal of at least one shrub at the easterly end of the site. To improve site distance even further. And a final comment was they showed a four-inch RCP pipe in the detention basin. I didn't check it, but it seems like it's not a material that's readily available. And if it's not, we uh, approve that they could use a um, PVC pipe. So the final recommendation was, the submission has been substantially uh, addressed our comments. And those identified at the previous public hearing. And approval of the project by the planning board may be considered subject to any conditions. Uh, their normal conditions of approval and any of the conditions we recommend such as. Uh, trimming of the shrub and reviewing the need for fall protection with the building inspector in comments uh, such as that. So that being said, um, if the applicant doesn't have any more. Comments on our comments, I would ask the board if they have any questions, I'd be glad to uh, answer them.
Any questions?
Dave, I have a que, this is Jeff Wrangle. Uh, Dave, I have a question regarding how um. At the street, when you get to the retention point, retention or ret, retention, right, or retaining?
No, it's a, it's infiltration.
Infiltration. When it, today, there's a slight depression at the edge of the road, and that's where this is, this is where this is being put. What's the, what's the, eh, the overflow, I guess what my concern is, the question has to do with the overflow and then it goes right on to the street. Um, that doesn't seem to make any sense to me, we, I've never seen us to. End up dumping water out into the street, even if that's the way it used to flow. Can you explain how that, can you explain how that's looks, that's passes uh, inspection there? I guess that, that, that's a good way of put it.
Well, first, I, I'd turn it over to the design engineer to explain the um. When that overflows, if it overflows, uh, and then I'll comment on his response.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if Eric Diaz or Stephanie Holben would rather answer that question from Strong Point.
Yeah, I can jump in on that, um, and Stephanie, correct me if I, if I'm wrong on anything. But in the existing condition, a, a significant portion of runoff from the site does flow toward our discharge point of the pond now. Um, I believe in, in Stephanie, please correct me if I'm wrong, in the two-in-ten-year storm events, which are the most common storm events that we designed for, obviously. Nothing actually leaves that basin at all. Um, so we're reducing the flow, so right now it'll flow to the existing small depression that's there. It will eventually overtop that depression and flow out to the street. Um, in the two-in-ten-year storm events that we're designing for. Now, we will collect in the infiltration basin and infiltrate everything back into the ground, so there will be no discharge to the street. Um, that discharge only gets activated in something greater than or up to the twenty-five-year storm event. Which i, at that point, then we will discharge to the. which i- at that point, then we will discharge to the road. But what we are showing is that we're discharging less to the road of Spruce Street that actually goes there in the, in the current condition. So we are re- eliminating in two of the four design events in reducing significantly in the two remaining design events.
Okay, thank you.
And correct, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't have the plans in front of me. Uh, that discharge point, is that directly to Spruce Street or is it directed over the driveway entrance?
I believe it's directly to Spruce Street. Uh, Stephanie, is that correct?
It's through, um, it's to Spruce Street, but there is about, I would say maybe ten feet, five to ten feet of grass uh of lawn before we hit the property line. And then another maybe ten feet of grass before it actually hits the pavement on Spruce Street.
So it does filter through about twenty or so through the vegetation before it gets to the paved surface of Spruce Street, once it does discharge.
Do we answer then, to answer Jeff's question, with that being said, um, whether or not you have approved it in the past, it's not an uncommon approach. And I would think that that has been done in the past. I, I can't, I can't think of a specific project um in Abington. But I'm sure that it's been done either with a discharge into a catch basin in a public way or discharged within the right of way uh of um a public townway. And I think as Eric said or um Stephanie said, it's not a direct discharge to the pavement. It's a direct discharge to a grass surface uh before it reaches a pavement. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Right. So there's a um, there's an effect there of dissipation and and spreading it out. It's not a point discharge of water coming out of the end of a pipe into the paved surface.
David, with the new stormwater protection rules, is that still a best practice?
The overflow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Onto the discharge onto a street.
Yeah, the, the is stormwater management, the best practices uh in this particular case um, deal with two things. One is stormwater quality. And they've addressed stormwater quality by having a proprietary uh catch basin to reduce sediment. The infiltration basin is a stormwater uh best management practice because it infiltrates and recharges groundwater. And the other part of stormwater management is stormwater runoff rates. And they've met the uh, as Eric said, the two and the ten. And they've throttled back the twenty five, even though um it's discharging in the twenty five. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, it discharges it at a slower rate and potentially less volume.
I believe that is correct.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm looking at the numbers right now. So we are actually reducing the flow and the volume for all of the storm events.
So that's the key. Um, most, a lot of towns want you to reduce both the rate and the volume. Um, so that's, I think, probably one of the most important parts of this project is that they're reducing the volume. Because just reducing the rate, it's kind of a this norm where you've reduced the rate, but it flows for a longer period of time because the volume has increased. In this particular case, rate and volume are either matched or reduced.
I have a couple more questions and I, but I don't want to step anybody's toes if they have a, keep going. Um, so looking at this retention basin some more, uh, the floor of it is at one thirty five, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and at what level does it start to overflow to discharge? That's, Stephanie, do you have the stage storage uh curves in front of you?
Uh, yeah, hold on. Let me, I'm pulling up the detail of the plan. Hold on.
So I, I can actually answer that. So the invert of the discharge is at elevation one thirty seven twenty five. So there's from the bottom of the pond at one thirty five, that would be two feet, three inches before it started discharge. It would pond before it started to discharge.
Alright, um.
That's why, also, also, that's why we suggested that they place a riser um, in, within the pond so that if you have frozen ground conditions uh that before discharge, it would, it would enter the, the riser and find its way to the, the ground elevation to continue to infiltrate rather than to uh immediately go out that pipe. To some extent too, um, that's a four inch pipe. Is that correct? That's where you're looking at the four inch R C P?
That's correct, yes.
Because it's a small pipe, it's gonna, it's gonna detain the flow in that basin. Uh, it's not like a twelve inch pipe where it's gonna be free flowing. The four inch pipe is going to, to some extent, constrict the flow.
Um, David, do you have um any thoughts about the traffic study that they've prepared?
No, not being a traffic engineer. Um, I would just say that in terms of parking, they've met the parking requirement. I exceeded the parking requirement. In terms of their model and how it was modeled, I don't have an opinion and wouldn't want to venture one uh and mislead either the board or contradict the traffic engineer. Um, as I said during my uh report, Bruce is probably, not to throw him under the bus, but Bruce is uh probably has the most experience um, in traffic review of probably most of the planning boards around. So I don't know if he wants to address that.
And Rick, if you'd like be, if I could just, you know, step in here, Rick, if you don't mind. Um, I read this very thoroughly because you, as you know, this is a, you know, a particular interest of mine and uh you know, trying to be uh objective and I thought they uh I thought they did everything they needed to do. They placed the machines for twenty four hours. They did the stopping site distances. Uh, I, everything that I saw on here, uh, you know, and, and the numbers were, were uh were fairly low. You know, we think of that as a cut through street, obviously. But uh, you know, I didn't see any uh excessively high numbers on the street. And you know, the fact that, and again, I'm trying to be objective, but the saying that they will add three percent to the total volume of the street. I mean, we all know it's a cut through street. You know, my issue would be there's no sidewalks. Um, but um as far as the mechanics of the traffic study goes, I think they they did everything that was required of them and the number, I didn't see anything that that stood out as far as the numbers goes, is, you know, being anything objectionable.
So here's my question is that we're talking seven condo units. So you'll have at least seven adults. May, maybe close to fourteen, well, let's say ten, eleven. And to say that there's only going to be three trips uh at the peak hour seems a little bit low to me. Uh, not that it makes a big deal, but um, I'm just curious, how do you get that if there's seven units, ten to fourteen adults, you don't only have three people leaving during rush hour?
Well, I think, Rick, if, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think if we look at this in the big picture.
I guess.
I'm sorry, can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Okay, uh, if, if you look at the big picture of the twenty or so houses on Spruce Street in this section of Spruce Street right now, they don't all move, pull out of their driveways during that eight to nine hour A M rush hour either. It just, it doesn't happen in any part of town. Rush hour is just always looked at as the busiest assignment day uh to get the worst case scenario. Now, obviously, some people leave at six in the morning. Some people don't go to work. They're retired. Some people leave work the night shift. Um, so, you know, to say that really three out of the seven residents are leaving during that one hour, I think that's completely irrational because I think if you look down the street, you see a very similar uh traffic pattern. Um, what I was I'm sorry?
It wouldn't be seven residents.
Call it, what do you want, seven, fourteen, thirteen? Um, that is using all of the, the uh, the, the national traffic rationale. But even if you said it was five, Rick, in a one hour period, you know, um, just comparatively speaking, they say that there is, there's actually more traffic coming into Abington during the morning rush hour than leaving Abington, which I was surprised at. I thought
I noticed that. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, it was, so more people are using it, I would think, you know, from the Rockland area to kind of away from Union Street and everything. That being said, um, it is, you know, less than, it's certainly not twenty three, twenty five thousand cars per day like Route eighteen. Um, it's a, it is a side street. It is a cut through street, but we are not overburdening the traffic on this street or in any of the local intersections to this street. And uh, we weren't required to do the traffic report, but we did it voluntarily because we knew that there was a concern and I think um, the, these guys have the track record, McMahon Traffic Assistant. So it is there for the record and I think it does demonstrate that there is no negative impact.
Yeah, I, I think that, again, if I could step in just for a moment. I think the traffic study shows that there's a fairly, of course, everybody lives on a street, thinks that they live on extremely high volume street. And I really thought that before I read this, you know, the study. Because, you know, thinking it was a cut through street, but it, you know, it's fairly normal traffic volume for a, uh, you know, a secondary street in town. And, you know, everybody thinks, not everybody leaves for work at seven in the morning or six thirty in the morning or nine o'clock in the morning. People leave at all different times and a lot of people are working from home these days. So uh, you know, the, it, to say that uh, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Rick, as far as being concerned that it you know, it seems like low numbers are going during peak hour, but not everybody leaves during the peak hour. And this is just an observation. It's not an opinion.
Any other questions? Open up to the public, uh, if I, the public have any questions?
I think Mr. Keating had his hand up right at the start, so I'm gonna unmute him if that's okay?
Please.
Hi there. My name's Kevin Keating. Can you hear me? Okay, I am the largest director butter to that property. Um, so first, that subdivision plan of seven townhouses where one house used to be there overwhelmed the uh capacity of the land is supposed to be at twenty percent for the building. It is it does nothing to inhibit the neighborhood. By how many people are on here tonight? Plan. If it's to a point, we'd like to go
Excuse me a minute. We're getting some kind of feedback.
Believe any of us would have an objection to that. As far as the traffic study goes, unless that's going to be a senior citizen complex, seven units, which could have the possibility of three cars each, twenty one cars in the same, only three cars would leave in the morning and cars coming back at night. That's outrageous. That is not true. I would like to everybody in the planning board to think, if, if you're a resident, they knock down the house next to you and want to put up seven townhouses. Um, how you, how agreeable you would be to that? You could have all kinds of engineering imports and everything else here, but this does not fit into the neighborhood. If, if it was going on to Route eighteen, which is part commercial, part residential, it would be a fine fit for that. This is strictly a suburban neighborhood and it cannot handle this many units. Um, the only other thing I have to say is, I have a question first on how far back are the townhouses proposed from the street? Are they going to be directly beside my house? Um, I believe I have the right, if you guys approve this plan, to have an eight foot stockade fence on his land to maintain my privacy. Um, and I believe these seven townhouses are gonna be almost directly next to my own home. So I definitely believe that I have the right to have, have him have a privacy fence so that I still maintain some privacy over here. Uh, and again, the neighborhood does not want this. We would like Mr. LaPointe to make some money, but not on this larger scale. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have some comment you might want to make on that or on the
Uh, no, I can summarize after we hear more, but to briefly, uh, we don't have any objection putting the fence up whatsoever. Um, some people prefer evergreens to a fence. Um, we have already called out evergreens, um, both to the rear of the building and the front of the building to create privacy, but if you'd like a fence added for that area, we have no problem with that.
Yes, I definitely do not want mature evergreens. I want, I've had privacy here for many, many, many years.
We can do that, sir.
Be able to maintain that.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? We have none.
Doctor, can I summarize?
Please do.
Alright, I'm gonna try to share my screen once again, so I can uh plug my notes here. Um, just to summarize what we've proposed and what we've shown you, what we've demonstrated, the proposal for two eighty six spruce street does not overload the water system. Um, as we talked about at the previous meeting, um, there's data at the water department that these two bedroom townhouses use only about ninety to a hundred gallons per townhouse on average. We do not overload the town sewer system because we're not using the town sewer system. Um, this will be a septic on-site according to L D E P standards. We do not overload off-street parking. We in fact exceed the parking requirements. We do not overload the local roads with any undue traffic congestion. That's the phrase used in our zoning bylaw. We submitted that twenty eight page report. We don't harm any wetlands because there are no wetlands on this lot. We don't create any light trespass onto abutting properties. Instead, we'll have the New England style lampposts, which are Doc Sky compliant. We don't overload any drainage. In fact, we improve drainage and reduce any existing drainage problems. We don't overload the site itself. It's about an acre and a half of property. The site plan uses the building back off the road to enhance privacy for the existing Spruce Street homes and for the new residents. Provide plenty of parking, conform to all zoning setbacks, provide significant landscape areas, and we provide an open backyard area for the new residents. We do not have any negative effects on the appearance of the neighborhood or the streetscape views because the building is, as I said, three hundred feet off the property and it's, it's screened by the attractive landscape island. If you're driving down Spruce Street, you're not gonna even see this building. It'll be affected and, and, you know, set fuck so far back. And it does not overload any town maintenance responsibilities because the residents here will pay for their, their own trash removal, their own landscape maintenance and their own snow removal. So in all respects, the submitted site plan conforms to the site plan review requirements as outlined in one seventy five seventy seven B N C. And it conforms to this zoning district. The R twenty zoning district's stated intent, you know, is zoning by law is to encourage compact residential development. The R20 zoning district's stated intent in our zoning bylaw is to encourage compact residential development. That's a quote. That's not my words. And then further, we have our site plan review approval process and the items that the board is required to review as they review a site plan and broke to approve a site plan. So in addition to compliance with local, with the land space and building space requirements, each application shall provide for traffic safety, ease of access to the street, proper grades. This is a very flat site. Site distances, as we mentioned, is 500 feet each way. The nearest existing street intersections, they're far down the road. They're not rate, we're not at an intersection. Safety and adequacy of the driveway layout, sufficiency of access for service vehicles and emergency vehicles. We've submitted the fire department radius. I have it here. Of course, everything I'm showing here tonight, I'll give a copy to Liz for the public record. Adequacy of pedestrian walks to for maximum safety. We are 300 feet off the street, so we don't have any issues with our pedestrians walking on the street. And those who are on our property, we have the garage spaces for parking and the parking immediately in front of the building. Safe and adequate means of disposal of sewer, garbage, and rubbish, as I just mentioned. Everything is going to be in-house and paid for by the residents themselves, not at the taxpayers' expense. We will be connected to the town water supply with seven separate meters. Stormwater drainage and snowmelt runoff, as was, has been gone over in a lot of detail. We actually improved the entire site with all the different levels of potential storms. This will be better for not only this property, for the abutting, but also for the abutting properties and less water going into the street. Adequacy of night lighting, we have submitted that also. It's DocSky compliant. We showed you, one of our plan sheets shows you the style of lighting in New England style. And then finally, exterior architectural appearance. We submitted the plans to show you the type of building. It's a typical New England style building with garage space. So in sum, after looking at all of the requirements in the site plan review bylaw, based on the town's, sorry, let me get back there for a sec. Based on the town's site plan review bylaw, the review comments of the town's consulting engineer and the professional traffic assessment report and the stated intent of this zoning district to quote, "encourage compact residential development", the submitted site plan for two sixty-eight, two eighty-six Spruce Street satisfies or exceeds all of the required and relevant design considerations and therefore should be approved by the Abington Planning Board. I've already submitted separate arguments and presentations for the special permit. We do need two separate votes, one for the special permit and one for the site plan. But I believe that we have worked together as a team to put forth everything that is required to satisfy all of those issues. We fully understand the concerns of the neighbors, and we have tried to address every concern. I think this is going to be a very attractive project, and it will be a benefit to the town in the form of the tax revenue, obviously, but it won't hurt the harm, harm the nature with the characteristics of this neighborhood because it is setback and we're intentionally taking advantage of that fact. So all for those, all those reasons above, we have satisfied each and every element of site plan review in this special permit, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. There's one other thing that I could read. I know you have it. From Steve John Knutall. Liz, can you let the planning board know that while many were trying to find the twoing traffic islands into one is an improvement? The ideal layout for the fire department would be to have no traffic islands, which can hamper emergency vehicle access to the operation. Obviously, it could be all asphalt. We'd have a lot less impervious area. And certainly looks good to have the island that's there. There is a fairly accurate, adequate driving radius. Obviously, if cars are parked all over the place, that's another situation that no one knows. But it was a 12-foot, now it's a 15-foot driveway, which gives the radius to move the apparatus around. But I wanted to read that letter if any of the planning board members have any comment.
I know, I saw the letter, but then I also saw the diagrams for the fire engine to get across. Two things really make, help the project from not interrupting the streetscape and not changing the appearance of Spring, from Spring Street from the road anyway, is its distance off the road. But the other critical part too was that island adding one more screen to the big block of a building back there. So I, you know, personally feel that the island has to be part of, part of the, part of it.
Are there any other comments?
Wayne, I was hoping to get your thoughts on their selection of trees, especially along the western property line. I seem to thought that we kind of just don't particularly like arborvitae's type trees. And I know this isn't technically arborvitae's, but I mean, it's, it looks like it.
Well, on the planting list, I noticed that they, they replaced somewhere. Find it, but they have spruce, which I know one of the comments that Dave made, that there is a problem with white pine and the fact that they look great when they're small. And eventually, as they get taller, then you, you really don't have any, any barrier. You see the trunks on them, but, but obviously, the branches go up higher. So I really, on what's there, they have cypress that they're putting in, as I say, white spruce. I really, M-Lox used to be great, but now we have the WJ and T D and fielded that causes problem with it. It's getting very difficult to have just about anything that stands up these days. I mean, one thing after another bites the dust with insects and so forth. So I would say that the white spruce is as good a choice as any at this point.
I also personally would prefer to see a denser collection of the bordering vegetation. And I understand the argument that, you know, from an angle, you don't need one every six feet. But I'd like to see more of it. Really kind of locking. One suggestion is, I believe the fire chief's, one of his main objections is that as soon as you get cars parked alongside the driveways like this, that 15 feet goes to eight feet very quickly. If we're going to say, well, we're going to have that island there, then we need some signs that say there is no parking along the driveways.
That's, that's probably an excellent observation, and I would suggest that perhaps part of the approval that we could have put along the, on the right as, as, as you come in, that no parking. I think that could be arranged and also perhaps on the, on the exit, on the, on the left side as you go in. If we could, if that could be arranged and, and put into the approval process.
Just one other quick thing. We actually widened those lanes to 16 feet, which, I mean, it's a foot more than we were talking about, but...
It does make a big difference. And it's interesting to note that actually ambulance is wider than the trucks, which is interesting. But we do, we have had that problem. We, we did do a development in town, and we realized, even though our rules and regulations said it was fine, it, it really doesn't work out if a car is parked on the side of the road, especially if they're on both sides. It just, you just couldn't, you could block the whole road up. And I think signs would, would be the best option rather than widen the road even more. But I appreciate an extra foot. But as, as you, somewhere in here, I saw the, the radius somewhere in here that, that the trucks could make it around. But obviously, if there's a car there, you have another problem altogether. So...
One more question. And I'm forgetting what it is, so I'll come back in a second. I'm sorry.
A lot of coverage?
No.
Mr. Smith, if I could, I did speak to the fire chief about the no parking signs, and everything you outlined is fine with us. It was something we would do, no problem. So basically, on the one-way areas especially, there'd been no parking. And that's one of the reasons why we also had the extra guest parking spaces were above what's required. So it would further decrease the chance that someone would just park along the island or along the driveway. There'd be, there's plenty of parking on the site.
Oh, what is the variance need that you, this project has?
There is no variance needed at all. We go to the zoning board for the special permit for the R20 use. Again, the, the R20 low den, sorry, the high density residential use allows for, actually, it says the actual wording is to encourage compact residential development. But you go to the zoning board for the special permit to confirm that. We've submitted the same site plan and all the other documentation to the zoning board.
Is there a definition of what compact is?
Yes, seven units on 1.4 acres.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I was just joking. I said seven units on 1.4, five acres. Compact residential, you know, the R20 is the zone that allows for multifamily and single family and two-family uses. The R30, R40 don't. And this is the R20 district, which does allow for the special permits.
Right, and as we'll probably discuss later, the exact definition of what multifamily is, is not really at our fingertips. Is multifamily three or is it 50 units?
It's three or more.
And we'll talk about that later on tonight with the rezoning.
Under, under current, the current zoning bylaw defines as three or more is multifamily.
Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Keating asked if he could speak again, and then there's a question from somebody named Rob Hobart. Has anyone looked into the project's effect on property values? But I could unmute Mr. Keating and can ask his question first.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Here we go. Just a question. I've gotten several calls on my phone saying people want to speak, but they can't unmute.
They, they want to unmute. We have to unmute them, but they have to let us know that they want to speak on their chat.
Yeah, can you announce that to everybody because there are people that want to speak?
I put it in the chat box several times, but I'll post it in there again.
Okay, and you can explain to them how it's done?
Yes.
People might not have that chat box on. This is the first time I clicked it on. I didn't realize anybody was chatting before.
If you can't put anything in the chat box, there should be a hand emoji you could put up, like a hand waving, and then I'll know you want to speak to it.
I always look at the bottom of the screen. There's a chat box to see if anybody's in there. You're doing many of these meetings too.
Mr. Hobart, Liz.
So, Mr. Hobart, can we unmute you?
Hello. I think you unmuted my father, but I'm happy to speak on our behalf. It's not a problem.
I didn't see another Hobart, sorry.
No, that's not a problem. My name is Adam Hobart, representing my grandmother who lives directly across the street from this development, like directly across the street. I only had a, you know, I spoke at the last planning board meeting with my concerns. I only had a couple more things, and you know, it's, it's a really precarious situation that kind of all of us are in right now, which is the idea that there are a large group of people, clearly noted by the amount of individuals in this meeting today that aren't too keen on this happening. And that's also conflicting with the fundamental nature of the American dream to make money, right? And property ownership, right? You know, there are a lot of people here pay their taxes, are part of a town that has committees like this and small government whose job is to protect the greater interests of the people that live there. I would like the planning board to take that into consideration when considering these special permits. There's a reason it's a special permit. You know, this wouldn't, there wouldn't be that many people here if a single home was going up, right? Right. You know, and I think that that's going to be, you know, evident with more people that, that want to speak. So I ask you all to consider that. I would also like to mention briefly, you know, these types of homes that Mr. LaPointe wants to build attract young professionals, people that, you know, recently got married perhaps, want to start a family, have kids. And when those kids finally decide to go outside and play, they're going to be met with a street with no sidewalks, but a park not too far away, Arnold's Park is not very far, will then have to walk on the side of the road to get there to play. You know, unless sidewalks are going to be put in through the entire thing, you know, it's just another thing to consider. And I will end my time. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Colin Haviland had a question. I'm going to unmute him. Okay, he's okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Haviland.
So my question is, do we have a tax revenue estimate on how much this is going to bring into the town? I know there's a lot of development in the town, and is there a number that we have estimated for what's going to bring in for everyone here?
If you'd like, may I speak, Mr. Chairman? If you were to take an estimate of a sale price, just looking at today's values, the cost of construction has significantly increased, but also the sale prices have pretty much maintained. A unit like this could be anywhere from $300,000 to $350,000 potentially. So let's use the high number, just for a number. We have to pick a number. 350,000 times, I think the tax rate is approximately $17,000. And if you had seven units, that would translate to something over $40,000 in tax revenue to the town.
That sounds great to me.
One of the reasons why the town historically, why two-bedroom townhouses are approved, because it's basically, as some people describe it, the next best thing to commercial. Because as you kind of intimated, you, you can't, it's not, they're not designed for large families. So it usually is a young couple or one person who just wants that extra bedroom or sometimes retired couple, or if a couple has their first child, the second child, they're moving out to a house. So it's low impact, low numbers of people, but yet you still get the tax revenue. A lot of times, it's first time. I'm sorry.
I think you're right. This would make great senior housing.
I didn't, all I heard was the senior housing part of it, sir. What's that?
This would make great senior housing.
I wouldn't doubt if some older residents did purchase here.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Lori would like to speak. I'm going to unmute her next.
Please.
Lori, if you could unmute, you can ask your question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I live two properties over from this development, and I have three small grandchildren that live with me, and I have two pets. So when we take a walk, we take up the whole street just to get to the end of the street so that we can walk to the park or down to the store or to get to a sidewalk. We have already had a couple of incidents with people driving their cars and not being happy that we are taking up the whole side of the street to get to a sidewalk. Kids do not play on this street because there are no sidewalks. You cannot go out at night. There is one street light on this street and one only. It, I mean, you put people there with small children and they can't, they can't go out on the street. It's not possible. And the traffic study's done. Nobody's, it's COVID. Nobody's coming down the street. The big trucks, nobody's doing any business. You wouldn't believe how many trucks come flying down the street when it isn't COVID. Because we have the landscaping company down the other side, they, this is a shortcut. All these trucks use it for a shortcut. I've lived here for a long time. Traffic study it means nothing unless you do it when it's not COVID and businesses are moving and that product is going all over the place. I think if this is going to happen, we need to get something out of it besides landscaping. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Karen Bowen would like to speak next.
Yes, please.
Hi. Yeah, I, I heard in the conversation that these were for purchase. I thought these were going to be rental units.
No, they're going to be sole condominium units.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that might be a good thing. But all right, that's all I had to ask. Thank you.
And I'm not sure, Mike of Mike's iPhone, do you want to speak?
Hello.
Hello, you're unmuted.
Okay. Uh, my, my only problem is, is this pro, this project is very uncharacteristic of this neighborhood. And if this is approved, suddenly it won't be characteristic anymore. Suddenly it won't be uncharacteristic anymore. And I'm just concerned that, you know, that these things are going to multiply in this neighborhood. And that's my biggest problem with this, with this project.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, could I have a suggestion for the general public? I, I know there's a lot of people online right now because there are three other hearings after this one. But well, people who are interested in sidewalks, there are a lot of people interested in sidewalks throughout the town. It's my understanding that the, the Avenue DPW is considering or trying to support the idea of asking town meeting to vote to approve a bonding article so the town can borrow money to repair some streets and repair some sidewalks, potentially add sidewalks on a, on a long-term capital plan over the next few years. And because we frankly don't, can't do it piecemeal through the town. So any resident, whether it's on Spruce Street or other streets, the, it's my understanding the DPW is putting together a list of kind of priority streets that have to be addressed. And sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the oil, gets the grease, whatever the thing is. So you, those who are interested in trying to promote the idea to add a sidewalk to a street might want to contact the DPW in Abington to ask that your street be added to that list.
Are there any other comments?
Jessica would like to speak. I'm gonna unmute her. You're all set, Jessica.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to comment. So I just want to kind of talk about how, what Mike just said in regards to zoning. Does this set a precedent now? If we are R twenty residential area and we approve a special permit for an R thirty, R forty, does that mean the next available lot where there's a house torn down or bulldozed down now makes it okay to put another condo unit? Just curious with the board, does this set a precedent?
It's an R twenty zone. In an R twenty zone, that is allowed. So that that could happen.
Okay, so thank you for the clarification. So in our twenty zone, you can have a seven unit, so we can just turn the next available lot into another condo unit. That's correct with an R twenty?
In an R twenty, that's what, what can happen. Obviously, it ain't enough room and so forth. I'm not sure how many acre lots there are in the R twenty zone without looking at it where you are now. It's always possible that someone can buy more than one house and come in with that also.
Okay, understood. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Hobart would like to speak, Mr. Rob Hobart, so I'm gonna unmute him.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? My name's Rob Hobart. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Um, I, my mother lives across the street. That was my son speaking earlier. I just have a few things to say. It seems like the project was put together quite well, obviously. Needed to be. My, my concern is is just stepping back and looking at the neighborhood, the muster field. I grew up here. I graduated Abington High School, lived there. It's all residential. I think you need to go to the property perhaps and try to picture what, what's shown on the blueprints and how this is going to look. And to be quite honest, it's going to look out of place. I mean, it's, it's, I don't think it's going to enhance anything, to be honest, with the construction of seven units with garages, two bedrooms and so forth. I don't think the blueprints do justice to what it will really look like for those that live around it. And any impact with traffic or whatever, I don't, that's an unknown. I, I think the muster field is the muster field. It was single dwelling homes in that neighborhood. Now, that's unique property. I know the property. That's 1.43 acres and 1.45. That is not what the rest of the lots were. So I can see why he would be interested in purchasing that and to do something with that, because you couldn't do that with my mother's. You couldn't raise her a house and put up condos because her lot's not big enough. So that, that, you know, that was a smart purchase on his part. But that being said, we also had to look, I think it had to be looked at, what was going to be done with that? And, and I think the board should really just look at that overall for those that are living there. And again, my question was, did anybody study what the property values of the surrounding, surrounding homes, how that might be, if they might be affected with this? What I see is sort of out of place structures being put there. And thank you for your time.
I have Royanne that would like to speak. Could you just give me your full name, Royanne?
It's actually Donna Peavy. Royanne's my daughter.
Okay, I'm sorry. Give me the last name again.
Peavy. We're remote from home. I'm just following up with Jessica about, you know, can they, will they be building anywhere? Will this open up Zero Summer Street too? I'm hearing a lot of rumors and seeing a lot of surveillance people down here too.
Isn't Zero Summer Street the one that just got denied or that they withdrew?
They withdrew.
Yeah.
Will it open up to be built again if all these condos start going up again too?
Well, that's a, if I could, excuse me, if I could speak, Zero Summer Streets in the Todd District, Transit Orientated Development District. And that's, that's a whole different zoning district than the R twenty that allows the, you know, multiple units. That's a whole different situation.
So no is really, no is basically, they're not, they're not getting related.
Yes, they're not related.
Sean, did you provide elevations?
Yes, sir.
Could you pop it up on the screen just for a moment? I'm afraid I can't find mine.
I don't have them on this laptop, I don't believe. All right. See. No, I'm sorry, I don't have them. They are, they were submitted in paper to you in the original submission, if you have that.
What are you looking for?
He means the building elevations, not the elevations on the ground.
None of the big plans, Liz. It wouldn't be in that sheet. All right, I see him. Thank you. Okay. If I could, if I could comment too. You know, I live in Abington and I, I have friends who live in the muster field and other parts of town, and I understand the concern about what comes next. It's a legitimate concern. I think the board has kind of intimated that, and one of the neighbors correctly said, this property is unique because of the size of it. And we would understand that if we were building five units or seven units up on the street on Spruce Street, that would change the character of the neighborhood. It would be something you'd obviously see every time you drove down Spruce Street. That's not the case in our proposal, however. It is, as we mentioned, 300 feet off the road. As an example, I hate to pick on Mr. Keating, but when you drive down Spruce Street, you don't see Mr. Keating's house. Because all you see is a driveway entrance leading out. And his house is out 300 feet behind others, behind trees and behind houses. And that'll be a similar situation here. You're going to see a driveway entrance. It is, for that reason, we were comfortable, you know, buying this property moving forward, tearing down what was a dilapidated house, and we think this will be an attractive project. And again, if, you know, if I could, well, I won't show you again, but the aerial showed how far back it is in relation to the other houses. The exist, the pre-existing house was 50 feet off the road. And this will be 300 feet off the road, a football field length off the road. For that reason, I think the LePoint's did their best to try to address the character of the neighborhood by using and enhancing the privacy and setting it back.
Mr. Keating, you wanted to speak again, if that was okay, Mr. Chairman?
Kevin Keating. The reason that my house is not seen is because there are two houses in front of mine. And I'd like to make one other comment about what Mike said. Does this open up opportunities for anybody else? This is a bad precedent to be set. Because I not only own that 1.46 acres of land that's next door to me, but I also own an additional acre. Which means if you approve this plan, then my land could have 12 to 14 units. It's a bad precedent to set. I don't want to destroy this neighborhood. But you're giving with this plan such a bad precedent, other things are going to happen in the neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. Let's have a little tiny development here and try and keep the neighborhood as is without a major development that belongs on Route 18, not in the muster field neighborhood. Thank you. Thank you, I'm done.
Is that everybody, Liz?
I think Lori, you still have a hand up on your iPad. Did you want to speak again?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. So give me one more chance. I don't see anybody else, Mr. Chairman.
All right, does someone want to close the public, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Deck it.
Motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 I think that's unanimous. No one was.
I do, another hand went up on Mike's iPhone if you want to let him speak again.
Boy, I haven't actually taken the vote. We've made a motion, so I'll let someone speak, but I, I can't do that.
You didn't just vote?
You voted to close the public hearing.
Please?
Did you vote to close the public hearing?
No, we did not take. Yes, I guess I asked for the vote. We didn't, yeah, I guess we actually, we actually.
We voted. Oh, that's right, we did vote, yeah.
We did, we did vote. I guess we can't, I apologize.
Sorry, Mike.
Does someone want to make a motion on the project as it exists?
They do on the site plan or the special permit?
Yeah.
On the special permit, someone want to vote on that for the special permit for lot coverage?
Make that motion. Excuse me, I'll make that motion.
Motion made.
Does this include the requirement for no parking signs?
We, we will do that when we, when we approve or disapprove of the, that will be in the next call.
All right.
This is just on the special permit, the lot, lot coverage.
Motion was made as a consecutive.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the lot coverage? Being none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 No.
We have, are there any other no's? So we have four yes and one no. Someone want to make a motion on the subdivision?
I'll make the motion. With.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion with, provided that the engineer and comments are addressed and I guess it was the no parking signs.
No parking signs and also the fence along the Keating property.
Yes.
Right. Yes.
Was that an eight-foot fence?
Six-foot.
All right, probably a six-foot fence rather than eight-foot.
Uh, no, I would think you'd want an eight-foot fence just to really give them some privacy. Firefighters aren't going to hop over that fence.
I, I would assume it's going to be the fence and still the landscaping, right?
So is it going to be an eight-foot fence or a six-foot fence?
I'd say eight. That's what Mr. Keating asked for.
Eight-foot fence. As long as we keep, we're keeping the landscaping also, kind of breaks up the eight-foot fence.
Are eight-foot fences allowed in Abington?
I think it's.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I think it's allowed. I mean, you can make an argument as a spite fence, but the neighbor wants it.
We, we don't have an ejection to an eight-foot fence. We'd run it, you know, along that area where Mr. Keating's property is adjoining.
I think that's what the gentleman specifically requested.
And we will keep all of the evergreens and other landscaping shown on the plan.
The motion's been made. We have it seconded.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. No.
Aye.
Aye.
So four in favor and one up here. So the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to add one comment for the record. The only reason I voted to support this project is because it's 300 feet off the street and blocked by landscaping. So.
I would agree.
You know, and, and people talk about precedents. I mean, there's already a precedent in this town. This is allowed by right. This isn't opening the door for anything. This is something they can already do. But the only reason I'm voting in favor of it is because it's a specific type of lot. It's 300 feet back. And I don't think that way it would be injurious, which is kind of the the level they have to meet in our bylaws to the neighborhood. There might be others where if they try to put seven units 50 feet off the roadway, I'd feel a lot different about that. But for this one, it's almost a separate, own little. But for this one, it's almost a separate, own little world.
I think in that neighborhood, we would all feel the same way. I would anyway, speaking for everybody else. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to put on the record, the main reason I voted no on both of these is because of the sidewalks. Now, Mr. Riley, he did his job and said the residents of the town can go ahead and get this put-on-town meeting to get a sidewalk. But in the meantime, even though, you know, and I know it's allowed, we're not setting a precedent, you know. He's allowed to do it, but still seven more units on the street with no sidewalk. And someone made a point, too. The traffic study that was done is, has been done in COVID times. Now, I had no arguments with the mechanics of the study. It was done well. But we all know, nobody's doing TM, turning movement counts these days because the traffic volumes are too low to do them. And I think that was a good point made by one of the residents, who's a lot of traffic engineer, which I think she made a good point, that the traffic volumes are artificially low right now. That's my concern. I just want this put on the record that I think sidewalks are needed on that street. And, and I think that the traffic volumes are artificially low because of COVID. So that's the reasons why I voted no.
And didn't we add a percentage to that to, for the, for the fact that traffic is low?
No, but Bob, nobody's doing, most people, yeah, I mean, guys are doing TMCs, Old Colony is doing TMCs, I mean, ATRs, but still, even adding the percentage, I think, I, I just think it's, it's, irregardless of adding the percentage, I still think it's low, and there's no sidewalks.
Well, there are many streets in Abington without sidewalks, and certainly sidewalks are something that would.
Well, I love sidewalks everywhere. I love sidewalks everywhere, Mr. Chairman. Someone's got to pay for them. So I mean, I'm just stating why I voted.
I, you know, I agree with such roads like that, that, you know, it seems terrible, not that they shouldn't be sidewalking each side just because of the danger factor. But there are whole towns like Norwell and Hanover where they don't want sidewalks because it ruins the historic significance of the road.
Yet, but you go in their subdivisions, yeah. And there's sidewalks right to the main road. And there's also only one street light on that road.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the traffic, the no sidewalks, and the one street light, I, I just couldn't in good conscience vote to approve this. But that's my opinion as a member of the board.
And at the same time, we have people walking with their backs to the traffic. I wish everybody would walk facing the traffic at least to give themselves a better chance. I know I, I have been a runner in the past, and I know what happens when you have one runner. He or she stays on one side of the street. When you put three runners out there, the next thing is they think they own the road. So, and it's a shame, and, and people get killed because of it, and it is a shame. I don't know, always stop traffic from being on the road. Anyway, we'll move on to the.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Zachary is here on that Form A, if you want to talk to him now.
Oh.
I suppose we can.
It's up to you.
Well, we will talk with him. I hope that he has someone that can speak as an engineer on the, I think home, Brendan, is what we really need. Put him on.
Yeah, I'm unmuting him.
3377.
Okay, Mr. Zachary? Can you talk again? We're having a hard time hearing you. Mr. Zachary?
He just got muted again.
Yeah. Mr. Zachary, can you hear us now?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yep.
Mr. Zachary, we had a number of problems with this, and I don't know whether you can address them.
I can do my best, sir. I can do my best. And whatever questions you have, I can take it back to that engineering firm. If I can't, if I can't resolve it tonight, at least I can tell them what your concerns are. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. We have some questions on, obviously, you're going to have to go before the City of Brockton's planning board also, right?
Yes, sir. There's, there's a small sliver of land at the top where it connects to North Quincy that is Brockton. And that's unfortunately why the subdivision is lot A, B, C, and D. A and B, A and D are Abington, and C and B are Brockton. They're just mirror image of, of each other to allow the two lots.
And, and the lot that, on lot A, there is another lot there that says map 34. Is that already separated from lot D?
No, sir. The entirety of the, so there's a gas station there, which is 171 North Quincy Street. Everything other than that is just one big lot. A, B, C, and D is just one big lot. So my contention is to just separate lot A, that's where I live. And that's 169, you can see it's delineated with that number, that the garage is right there. That's, that's where I live. And then I just wanted to separate it so that there's like two and a half acres there remaining where I'd continue to live. And then lot D, I guess in conjunction with lot C, next to Brockton, that would be the area that would separate from lot A.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
That answers my question. I don't know about, about the abiding property being, being run, the state park. I don't think that has anything to do with the Form A, but I'm not sure.
No.
Yeah, I noticed that. I apologize. It's supposed to be Knoll, Ames Knoll.
Ames Knoll, right.
Yeah, and he wrote Norwell, which is very strange.
As far as the utility line goes, you look at some of the plans that we get, and they still say Penn Central Railroad instead of MBTA.
It's weird. Yeah, I, I'll have to speak with Scott regarding that, but it's, that definitely needs to be corrected.
In the, in the Brockton Edison Company easement.
Right.
Not that, I don't think it has anything to do with the Form A, the Form A, see, that may, him coming on clarified it for me anyways. He owns that one big parcel, and you're basically creating lot A and D and fixing these little slivers from Brockton.
It would be so much easier, sir, if it was just all in Abington, because it would be lot A and B.
Right, I get it.
Because, yeah, because of that little sliver, we had to create B and C. So A would be with B, and C would be with D.
Right, and they'll all be combined, obviously.
With Mr. Zachary's clarification, I'd be prepared to vote on this.
I, I would make the motion approval not required.
One second. Quick question, please?
Yes.
Is lot A the one that has the cars on it, or is that the 171 North Quincy LLC?
It's 171 North Quincy, sir. I've got three cars that I own. That's what's on lot A, but 171 is a gas station. And then actually, next door to me, there's a lot of cars that I think is map 34 plot six, but that's, that's not me, that's someone else.
Yeah, that needs to be another conversation some other time.
I'll be involved in that if I, if I have the option. But yes, sir, that's not me.
Hey, motions been made and seconded. Plan not, not being approved of division control or not required. On the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, I think that was unanimous. All right, Mrs. Zachary, you're all set.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to get on here and clarify.
Thanks for coming on, sir.
Thank you so much.
Public hearing, Phil Comett, 652 Adam Street. Is that, Liz is?
Yes, sir.
I've never read anything on that. Who am I doing?
No, that was just a hearing notice that was mailed to the abotters. It didn't have to be printed in the paper.
Is that Phil permit just a technical, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's thing? I'm not sure, because that's the neighbor that's had the problem that he and the owner of the commercial property have had problems, right?
So the next three items on the agenda, which is 652 Adam Street of Phil permit, 67 Oak Street, which is also another part of, on the other side of 662 Adam Street. So it's those three houses in a row. And when the board was taking testimony at an earlier meeting, it was discovered that Phil entered and left both of those properties on either side. So this is the property to the left of 662 Adam Street, which with the site plan before you and a Phil permit before you. So this house is to the left, it's Mr. Carney's property. And then to the right is Mr. McKinnon's property, and he got a letter asking him to attend tonight, that he needs to file for a Phil permit as well. If that gives you any clarity.
Okay.
Okay. Who is speaking on the Phil permit at 652?
I'm unmuting Mr. Carney right now.
Hello?
You're unmuted, Mr. Carney.
Hi, guys. So I'm, I'm applying for a special permit to, I guess you, you guys know the story. Mr. Sullivan bought the property next door. As a cost-saving measure, he excavated part of my yard with my permission in lieu of putting up a retaining wall between the two properties. And I'm now applying for a special permit because I, apparently, Mr. Sullivan has filed a complaint about me not having a permit.
And how many yards of fill were taken or removed?
I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I think it was approximately 700.
700 yards removed or brought in?
700 removed. Nothing has been brought in. It was, there was, it was about a 10-foot-high knoll between the two backyards. And like I said, rather than put a retaining wall between the two yards, he removed my half of the knoll.
Do we have any paperwork on how the grades changed?
I, I submitted an application.
You should have gotten a three-page application.
It's got the, the red dots on it?
Yeah.
Yes, it, it's, it's not extremely professional, but that's my drawing. That's, that's where the fill was removed. There's a copy of a topographical map there also showing the elevation before.
We don't know exactly where the, where it all ended up. Is it all in the gravel block?
Well, the, the arrows indicate, yeah, I know the application asks for truck route. Basically, the fill was removed from my yard to Mr. Sullivan's yard. And where it went from there, you can ask him.
I know I haven't been over to view, and has anyone else seen it from the street or anything else?
Yeah, well, the, the fill, I just drove by there today. I mean, I, there's a big pile of fill out the backyard of Mr. Sullivan's. Maybe, you know, eight feet high or something.
Perhaps the thing for us to do at this point is for me to go there and take a look at the property with Mr. Carney, May's permission?
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to have you out here, see what's been done.
What this board is.
What did you say again? Wayne, say again.
You want me to go out? I, I, the problem with something like this is you, you really can't view it from the street.
Yeah.
Must have gone someone's property. We've avoided doing that in all, all these cases over there. I, I know the board saw that any more than I am, that we don't have an engineer that is showing us what's happened. Not in a situation where something was filled. Obviously, wetlands were made, that's another issue. But if I viewed it, at least I would be able to report back to you at the next meeting.
Well, Mr. Smith, I'd, I'd be happy to have you out here. You just tell me what time I can meet you, and I'll, I'll walk you around, and I'll show you whatever you need to see.
Mr. Smith, if you need another set of eyes, I'll go with you.
All right. If that's what the board would like to do, then we can send it to the next meeting or I'll make a decision in that meeting. Would that be better for everyone? That's, that's the question.
I don't have a problem with you guys going looking. I lost part of that conversation. I don't know, the, the gremlins must have got me, and I had to re, re come back on.
I'd be in favor of continuing, continuing this, you know, if the chair would like to take a look at it.
I will continue the, continue the hearing until the next, uh, next meeting, please. What is it?
All right, Mr. Smith, yeah, Liz has my email, so you can, you can get in touch with me through email or my phone, and, and I, I'll be happy to show you around.
Fine, thank you.
We need to make a motion on this, Mr. Chair.
I just continue the hearing from next one.
Okay.
We need to vote on that, though, because it was on the agenda. It needs to be continued to a date certain.
Right, so the date certain would be, I look at my book.
The April meeting?
The April meeting.
That was by you, Bruce?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. A second.
April 5th.
Thank you.
And I'll get in touch with Mr. Carney and.
We still need to vote.
Please?
We still need to vote.
Right, we will. And I just, playing against.
Sorry.
We'll shoot over there. So on, on the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Thank you.
Public hearing, Phil Board on site with no permit, 67 Oak Street. Don't want to keep on that.
I, I am looking for Mr. McKinnon. Oh, I think that's him. Let me unmute him. Mr. McKinnon, are you K M McKinnon? Okay, I just asked you to unmute. If you hit that, you can speak. There you go.
James McKinnon.
Okay, he's on, you guys.
Mr. McKinnon, do you have anything you want to say on the, on the fill and changes made on the property?
No, I didn't. What I was just told to just take, he asked me if I could take some of that fill out, and I put it over my side and created a berm. And I didn't realize you needed a permit for that. I didn't realize it was that much, and I didn't know you had to have a permit, so I didn't get one. And I got the application to process it.
All right. Can you fill that out and get it to us?
Absolutely.
Are there any questions from the board?
No questions. Well, I, I just a comment. We had one of our, one of the people that came before to the fill permit, one thing I asked a question about, and they sort of revealed, and I don't think it's uncommon, is dumping that kind of a load and not compacting it properly with machines at every, every six inches. And in this one particular place they dumped, I don't know how many, how much soil, but without compacting it. Without compacting it with machines at certain levels, that whole thing is just going to settle and move. Just make that as a statement for if you don't know that, that you can't just pile it.
Yeah. I guess I have a question.
No.
How tall is the berm? What's the purpose of the berm?
Just for privacy, and I want to, eventually I'm going to put some, maybe some spruce of Abadis up there.
Any idea how tall it is?
Roughly, I'd say about 10 feet, maybe. Eight to 10 feet.
Above what was there. Right?
There was just a small hill. Yeah, there wasn't just exactly, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, the two concerns on our end, or a couple of concerns on our end is, one. As Jeff mentioned, making sure that it's compacted and safe and done to.
I do, I do clean undress it up, yes.
And the second part is, does it change how stormwater flows off your property onto others? If I, I'm trying to picture the property to your left. If it's higher or lower. I think it's higher.
I think it's, possibly it is higher, maybe possibly a little bit.
But that's one of the things that we need to also find out is, is this having an adverse effect? To any of the properties next to yours. Obviously, the biggest one's probably going to be 662 Adam Street, but they gave it the fill. So, I mean.
Sure.
Let's get about that.
Would it help, would it help if someone went out and looked at it so we have a better idea of what's going on there?
Yeah, when they come over, have them come over and look at it, when they're looking at Mr. Kearney's.
Not that I want to give the chairman any more work, but.
I actually have somebody who'd like to speak when you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Perhaps we can do that, Mr. McKinnon. We can, I'm sure. Have your telephone number, and we can. Set up a time to come over and take a look at it and see what actually.
Thank you.
And then. Stay with us as we have the. People in the area that want to comment on it.
Yes, I will.
Go ahead, Liz.
Good evening. This is Frank Murphy and Debbie Lones of Oak Street. We're abutting the property in question. Really, our complaints are really a rehash of the practices of adjoining co-conspirators. The business owner had no survey markers in place. He had no silvery areas in place during grading or other phases of the work, and he had butts, sensitive areas, and wetlands. We have reason and pictures to believe that the illegal and dirty fill was used to build up the base layer and which he put upon top coat. We have pictures of trees being buried, trees that he had cut down, logs that he pushed downhill. He denuded the property of all the existing trees, so I really don't know what trees he plans on putting in its place. The business owner pushed dumps, logs into the barrier areas. He has stripped, filled, and graded property on the 112 Oak Street address, and again, he had no survey. Despite conversations with the owner of that property. The business owner has negatively impacted the quality of life in the neighborhood with extensive off-hour operations. Illegal work operations such as open-air sandblasting of trailers, equipment, heavy equipment operation off-hours. Extensive and extended noise impact via heavy equipment diesel engine idling. We have pictures of all that through the fall of 2018. And the times and the dates. Okay? He has attended exhaust rooms directly negatively impacting Oak Street residents, excuse me, Oak Street. One of them was an elderly lady who lived at 112 Oak Street, who had severe respiratory ailments. She since passed away of pneumonia. Imagine how she felt. When she had sandblasting dust long through her windows. Okay, the business owner stores heavy motorized equipment without oil or fuel drift mitigation. It lands on the ground, it runs downstream, runs into the water area. You know, summarize. He's got injurious impact to the neighborhood. He's performed degrading effort on his own accord. No town approval process, continued to ignore the town bylaws and oversight. He's flunked environmental laws, and he's had a negative impact on the area. What used to be a good business neighbor has turned into a nightmare for us on Oak Street, at least this half. So this man continues to ignore laws, any town committing oversight, and his neighbors. And any environmental regulation that he thinks he just wants to run over. He's ignored everything. And just did what he wanted to and said, catch me. We've got pictures, we've got dates, we've got times. I can show you what he's pushed away. I can show you what the hillsides used to look like. Because it does not jive with his description. Over and done.
Okay, have you given any of those pictures to Liz or anything?
No, would you like them?
Sure, be great.
I'm done.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have Mr. Whitney with his hand. So I'm going to unmute him if that's okay.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm actually here to represent Robert Sullivan. He is the owner of the property at 662 Adam Street. And the board is acquainted with me and with Mr. Sullivan. We have appeared before the board previously. I want to just be a little bit of help here. These three gentlemen that appeared before you tonight, Mr. Kearney, Mr. McKinnon, and Mr. Sullivan. Made some mistakes. There's no doubt about it. They should have come before the town. And asked for Phil permits and removal permits. They didn't do so. They were working in harmony with one another. I don't think today that any one of them has a beef with what was transpired. Respect to removal of fill and placement of some new fill. Processed gravel on Mr. Sullivan's property at 662 Adam Street. So, Mr. Sullivan, to his credit. Has filed that Phil permit and has proceeded. He's here again tonight to proceed on that as well. Approval that's been before the board on a number of occasions. And I would just say to you that with respect to what was taken out and what was replaced. There were approximately 1,113 yards that were removed. Some 300 of those yards went on to Mr. McKinnon's property. I hear all of the complaints from the neighbors. I don't think those complaints, however, are related to this berm that was built. They may be, the neighbors may prove me wrong, but I don't think that they relate necessarily to this berm. This berm was created, the fill was removed from both Mr. Kearney's lot and Mr. Sullivan's lot. And basically, nobody said boo. Until Mr. Kearney got hit to a tiff with Mr. Sullivan, and I'm not laying blame on him. Or Mr. Sullivan, somehow their relationship broke down. And then, you know, everything kind of hit the fan. And so Whitman trying to make amends for that. The, we have an engineer here this evening again, Sean Haddie from Haddie Engineering. He would be pleased to speak to the board about the processed gravel that was brought into the site. It's a common gravel that's used on a storage lot. It wouldn't be used on a supermarket lot or a fast food joint. But it would be used for a place where there's essentially storage of vehicles, not. You know, ongoing traffic back and forth. It just is not that type of a use that Mr. Sullivan wishes to put to his property. So, you know, I don't know where the board goes with this, but. The way things are. They're on the property now. It seems to be everybody's liking, perhaps, as I say, not to the people out on Oak Street, although. I'll let them speak specifically to the berm that was created and whether or not that has had an impact on them. There may be other aspects of Mr. McKinnon's operation that they have a beef with, but I just suggested to the board that perhaps. This issue, the Phil permit, as I look at it in your bylaws. It's primarily focused on how drainage is possibly changed on lots. And how that affects adjoining lots, but also a lot of the focus seems to be on. Where are the trucks coming from? Where are they going? What hours in the day are they going? And so on and so forth. And the only thing I would say to you is, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Kearney, Mr. McKinnon. Shouldn't be rewarded for having gone forward without the proper process. But at this point, it's done. It's done. And so we have the Phil permit before you. We also have the site plan. And when the board is ready, I'd be happy to speak to the site plan, but. I wanted to just jump in here and speak to the Phil permit that now. Is three Phil permits that are before you. And I understand the board probably wants to take a look at these three sites. But I think what the board's going to find in the end. Is that the three property owners satisfied with the conditions that result from whatever work was done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Liz?
Um. No. Not on this project.
What's the board's feelings on this?
Wait a minute, Frank and Debbie, did you want to speak again? Okay, am I muting them?
Yeah, this is Frank again. The pictures we have. Don't show a berm. I see a berm on the depictionary as a raised hillside or filled area. What we have pictures of is you guys filling in an entire hillside slope down towards sensitive area and wetlands. On level ground. What you're making is a level parking lot and extending that parking area. That's not a berm. Not at least one I know of. Over here.
Where's your sensitive environmental area in this area?
Yeah.
It's a. Not official on the, we. Had somebody come down from the town. He said, yes, it's wet, but it's not official on the map. But it's basically a moist area, and then there is a stream that goes through there, springs.
Between like Hemlock and.
Behind 112 and what would that be, 118 over there?
Yeah, I think so.
112, 118, Oak Street. You'll see the green hash areas.
Between like Bay State Circle and Hemlock?
No. Back, come back.
Come back towards 105 Oak Street, but between Bay State Circle and Oak Street, down the hillside. It's an extensive steep slope, which he filled in.
So, not official? You had someone from conservation come out, and they said it wasn't a wetland?
Yeah, officially it's not.
And there's no official stream back there?
It does show a stream, but not defined as a wetland.
He told us that if we went to like three or four houses down and asked them to have it. Looked at or whatever, that that could be. But where we were looking, it's just, it's wet all the time, and I've been here for a long time, and it was a stream over there.
But clearly, he's not talking about a berm. He's filling in an entire hillside. Knocked down the trees and filled over it.
I think if you have some documentation, that would be helpful to look at.
I do.
Oh, we do.
Come on by.
You're going to send them to Liz, right?
Yeah.
Well, we'll continue this hearing until. April.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just two quick thoughts. I'm really tired of dealing with this issue. It's been months. Where this comes before us every single month, and we seem to get nowhere. And there's just a lot of arguing and finger pointing, and I didn't do this, and I didn't know this, and he did it, and he made me hurt my feelings, and so we're not doing this anymore. And I just, I need to get this done with soon. I really don't want to deal with this anymore.
What would you suggest?
I want answers at our next meeting. The plan that we got, this site plan that we got, this is not a site plan. And our consultant told them that it was deficient, and they didn't fix anything on it. So, I mean, at what point are we going to just say, no, we're not doing this?
Which property are you talking about?
662.
652.
We haven't got there yet. 662, we haven't.
We haven't got there yet, but it's all related.
It's all related.
I understand it's all related, Rick, but. You know, it's nice to yell and scream about all this stuff, but, and we've been, we started out with this on 662. Which started way back last spring. And I was on the phone with it and the site plan and everything else. I don't need to go over it from the beginning for what it is right now. But we continue to come along. If you can tell me how we could do it better, I'd like to hear it from you.
I'd like to have answers at our next meeting. Why didn't, why didn't we got out and done this walking three months ago?
That's correct, and we have done legally and everything else to get this information to us. And that's what we're working on, and we've had other things get added to it as time has gone along. But as far as I'm concerned, we have done everything we can as a planning board to get this information.
I'm not annoyed at the planning board. I'm annoyed at everything else.
Well, you very well may be, and I understand where you're coming from, but tell me that we've got to do something different. I'd like to know what it is.
I want everything resolved next meeting.
It'd be nice to have done, we've had PMP report on this. Are they on tonight?
Yeah, do you want me to unmute him?
No, no, that's, that's, that's fine. We'll get to it. But we, I don't know what I could do any different than what we have done, Rick.
I would agree with the chairman. It's frustrating, but I think we've done what we can. We haven't got to 662 yet.
They pissed on these guys' backs and tell them it's raining.
So.
Motion to continue this until. This particular one till next meeting.
Motion made.
Second.
Do you agree with the discussion? All votes in favor, say aye.
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 I think Frank and Debbie's pictures will help us too, I think.
Yes.
That could be a whole other can of worms.
We'll see.
All right, right now, I'm going to unmute everybody involved with 662. Starting with Mr. Stewart.
Have we, have we opened that one?
I'm setting unmute people. Mr. Whitney?
Public hearing, Phil Board on site with no permit. Site plan review, 662 Adam Street, continue.
Engineers?
I don't know whether Mr. Whitney would like to start with this or.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be glad to. And I can appreciate the frustration felt by members of the board. This has gone on for a number of months. What I can't agree with is that the applicant here before you tonight. Has not provided answers to this board and has not been very responsive to the town's engineer. With respect to comments that had been made on previous site plans that had been provided to the board. First, with respect to the Phil permit. Again, I would say that 1,113 yards of fill were removed from the site at 662 Adam Street. And 383 yards of fill were brought in in the form of processed gravel. The engineering reports that have been presented to the board. Indicate that that fill is processed gravel of the same kind and nature that is used to construct parking areas. And so it is that Mr. Sullivan felt that it would be an appropriate base. For him to park his vehicles on. You recall, he is in the trucking business, and he maintains trucks that go out and plow. Roadways and parking lots and big commercial developments and so on and so forth. So. That's why he bought the property last year. He and his wife bought the property. It's in the industrial zone. It's in the industrial zone. They figured it would be a great place to park trucks. There is a place to park trucks right next door, the McKinnon property. He's been there for years and years, has existed. Now, somewhat comfortably with the neighbors down there, somewhat uncomfortably, possibly with some of the people on Oak Street, but nonetheless, he's been able to carry on this business in this industrial zone. So all Mr. Sullivan wants to do is to pay taxes to the town of Abington and use his property in much the same vein that Mr. McKinnon has been using his. It's an allowed use to be able to park vehicles back there. With respect to the fill permit, as I said earlier, from what I can gather, looking at your fill permit regulations, a lot of them are to make sure that as fill is being removed or brought in, that it's done in an orderly fashion, that there isn't dust blowing up on neighboring properties, that there aren't trucks running in and out of the area at eight o'clock in the evening or six o'clock in the morning, that the tr- the roadways are kept clean and orderly and there's a orderly fashion about the whole process. And I would suggest to the board that the, although Mr. Sullivan made errors in the beginning in failing to apply for and receive a fill permit, he did his work in an orderly fashion, such that, to my knowledge, maybe the board would prove me wrong. To my knowledge, there were no complaints about how the work was performed. There were no neighboring landowners that came in and filed complaints and so on and so forth. Now, I know that's not the standard of not making excuses. We've done what we had to do to try to resurrect and start from scratch. But by the time we did that, the fill was in place, the fill had been removed. And I think it's evidence enough that the board never got any complaints during the course of the process of doing that, that it was done in a reasonably workman-like, safe and orderly manner. So the fill permit, to me, uh, I would suggest to the board is kind of academic at this point, you know? Now, the board may have some legitimate issues with respect to the site plan and we've tried to address those. The engineer is on tonight. His name is Sean Hardy. I won't, you know, get too dangerous here with myself, I'm a lawyer, not an engineer. But I want to just summarize the the three or four items that we have that I think of the board's concern. And then I'll let Mr. Hardy, if he would, put up the plan and 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 talk to the board further about those plans. The first is whether or not this lot should be paved. And it does say in the bylaws at section one seventy-five forty-eight that a parking lot should be paved. However, it also says uh that some other suitable hot material may be acceptable in the discretion of the planning board. And so I would suggest that what Mr. Sullivan has put on his lot is a very acceptable material for the kind of application that he's making. He's not like a fast food, he's not, he doesn't have virtually any traffic. You'll recall what I mentioned to the board previously in our hearings is that the trucks come in in the spring and they go out in the fall and many, many of the, most of them are parked on site. You go to a shopping mall and you see this heavy equipment parked over in the corner in February. It's there to be at the ready if there is a snowstorm. And so that's what Mr. Sullivan does. He owns those vehicles. He's looking for a place to park them in the off season, during the spring, the summer and the fall. That's what this bill, that's what this bills out, this this property is into doing. It suggests again that it's an appropriate use, it's an allowed use, it's a use that's been put to the property next door, McKinnon's property. And so the processed gravel that is on the site, I would suggest is the same process gravel that's at sixty-seven Oak Street, Mr. McKinnon's property. It's the same property that's at six seventy-eight Adam Street, Wayne's Mattress property. It's the same property that's the same, the same material that's at nine ninety-nine Adam Street. That's Precast Specialties. See, when you talk about the 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 one seventy-five forty-eight, it talks about a parking area. This is really just a storage lot. It's not, th- there's no cars that are gonna be parking here outside of the one or two cars that might somehow service the house that's on the property, depending on what the future of that house holds. And Mr. Sullivan will be candid with the board tonight, he's not sure what he's gonna do with the house. He knows that he can't keep the house and keep the business too without some kind of zoning relief. So he doesn't intend, if and when his site plan is approved, he can go forward with his use of the property. He doesn't intend to use the house and use the, use the property for parking his trucks without getting some kind of zoning relief. That's the first issue is whether or not the lot should be paved. The second issue is the driveway. You recall previously that there were two driveways, one to the north of the house, one to the south of the house that were depicted on the per- on the plan. The plan that you have before you tonight, it shows that one of the driveways, the driveway on the north side of the house has been eliminated. That would become all grass area. And so what that would leave us with is one driveway on the south side of the house. Now, we need to talk about buffer strips and driveway widths and what is provided on plan. What's provided on the plan is a five-foot buffer strip with an eight-foot-high fence between the Kearney property and the Sullivan property. There's a five-foot berm. Mr. Sullivan would be pleased and would be happy to accept a condition of this site plan approval that he does plantings in that five-foot strip that appropriated in the eyes of the board, the discretion of the board. Is it, I would like, is it sometime of a kind of planting? Uh, let us know and Mr. Sullivan would be happy to consider it and uh get back to you and let you know that it's affordable, he can do it, or that maybe he has some other alternative, but he's willing to do a buffer strip, the buffer strip is five feet. And if we look at uh one seventy-five, section forty-seven, it says that a bu- a buffer strip should be twenty feet, but it can be less than that if it's got appropriate solid screen fencing and appropriate planting. So what Mr. Sullivan uh proposes is the screen fencing that's there, complemented by appropriate planting, it's like gives a five-foot berm, a five-foot buffer, I should say, on the south side that separates the driveway from Mr. Kearney's property. Now, that allows for a twenty-foot driveway. On the plan, the most recent plan that's been presented to the board, it shows that that driveway tapers down to fifteen feet on Adam Street. We would like to ask the board that we are, we are able to use and and keep a uniform driveway going on the south side of the property that is twenty feet wide. And that will allow for a five-foot buffer on the north side of that driveway, which separates the driveway from Mr. Sullivan's existing dwelling there, if you will. And so we would eliminate the the north driveway and it would be one twenty-foot driveway in the south. The third item is the buffer strip and I've spoken about that, one seventy-five sixty-six. And and how we would address that. There i- is a need for a buffer strip along the back of Mr. Kearney's property. We understand that. Uh, Mr. Sullivan's plan has provided for an eleven-foot buffer strip with fencing, with appropriate planting is what is proposed. Lastly, is the lot coverage. When we were here before you in January, we showed a plan that was somewhere around seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent lot coverage. You'll see on the plan that is before you tonight that we have reduced that lot coverage to fifty-nine point nine percent. So we're under the sixty percent. Honestly, we'd like to ask the board to consider allowing us, and we would file, request it, a special permit to exceed the sixty percent coverage. And when you, the only place we want to exceed that coverage is on the very back of the lot, which is an industrial, Mr. Sullivan's industrial property is a buddy, Mr. McKinnon's industrial property. And then on the north side of the lot, again, Mr. Sullivan's industrial property is a buddy, Mr. McKinnon's industrial property. I don't see, and perhaps the board could educate me, but I don't see anything in the bylaws that require a buffer strip between two adjoining industrial properties. So if the board would entertain that and give us some feedback, positive or negative tonight, we would like to, would, we would like to do away with the buffer strip that's on the north side, the north boundary of the property and on the rear of the property. And those are the issues that remain. And again, the the act, Mr. Sullivan is more than happy to work with the board. I think although we got off to a rough start, we've shown good faith, coming back uh many times before the board to fully give the board um a a site plan that uh the board could look at with some degree of of certainty would would be uh, would be something that would not affect the neighbors, that everybody would be able to coexist and move on, just as these properties have for a long time. It's a dust, industrial meets residential, that's always a concern. Um, we're trying to address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman? Mr. Peralta's offered to share his screen and go through the plan and his review, if you'd like to do that.
Please, please.
Okay, you're all set, Mike?
All right, it's not letting me share my screen. All right, here we go.
Where are you, want a tropical?
There we go. There we go. So, um, what I put up on the screen is a split screen showing the plan and then showing the latest review letter.
We got nothing. We got nothing.
There you go, Mike.
Now.
Yep.
There we go.
There we go. What we have is is the the plan and the review comment letter that that went out um back in February. So the outstanding comments along the curb opening, which is down here at Adam Street, they need to actually put the geometry for the, for the turning radiuses. A straight driveway to the street, ninety degrees with no turning radius, that's what we've been asking all along. They need to show turning radiuses and the dimensions for these radiuses. Right now, there's a five-foot buffer along here. We've been, we've been saying all along, this needs to be ten foot along this property line. That needs to be increased and I will get to the reason for the ten feet in a moment. Um, there's also measures to minimize soil erosion. And we're suggesting that they provide for a silk fence along this property line it to remove the gravel. And also there's a catch basin up front that needs to be protected. And they also need to take the driveway out, which they're not showing, that they put into Adam Street and returning this back to vegetation. Now, we have this area that says gravel area to be paved. In a nearly a presentation and hearing, when the board made the recommendation to have it paved, I explained that yes, you can park trucks on gravel. But the problem with it is, is that these trucks have a tendency of dripping oil, diesel fuel liquids. There's no prevention for that going into the ground. So therefore, the design includes deep-sump hooded catch basins, there's two of them in here, to actually keep the hydrocarbons that float on the surface and then trap the sediment before it goes in the ground for the in-ground disposal. The paved surface provides a means to take anything that drips on the pavement to be able to clean it up. Or if it rains, it catches into these catch basins where the product can be removed. That is the environmental feature and reasoning for continuing to use a paved surface. And therefore, the the comment again continues to say, you need to have it so it shows the thickness of the pavement. As for the system here, the in the ground, we need to see the network distribute the the drain lines from the cats, the structure into each of the rows and also provide some observation ports in order to be able to see what's going on in the chambers and see if they're, if they're functioning or they're failing. And they should be cast by and covers to to finish grade. Here's the driveway issue. No driveway shall be closer than ten feet to any side or rear lot line. The current driveway is about ten feet off the property line. The proposed driveway, which has been continuously shown on the plan, is only five feet off the property line. The dimension from the lot line to the corner of the house is twenty-nine point nine feet, almost thirty feet. If you notice on what he did with the gravel driveway on the other side of the house, he had it right up against the face of the house. If you take ten feet and keep this buffer on this side, that gives them twenty feet to put a driveway. Minimum driveway for industrial is twelve feet. Again, there's not two-way traffic in here. They want to make it a little wider. Push it between the ten-foot line back to the house, just rearrange this concrete curbing and rebuilt it to the street. Now you're maintaining the zoning requirement for a ten-foot sideline to the, and you're then maintaining your buffer. So this is why the comment continues to be put onto the plan.
Mike, can I interrupt you for a second?
Certainly.
Um, didn't we hash this all over the last meeting in?
I thought we did.
And I thought this is what we agreed on?
Yes.
That what the planning board was looking for?
Yes.
Okay. So we're rehashing it again this meeting?
It wasn't, it wasn't done on the plan.
I get it, I get it. So my comment still is, and we're continuing to rehash it because somebody doesn't want to do it like this or?
It, well, obviously the plan came back with the things not changed, so.
That's, that's what I'm getting at.
That answers it.
Yeah, I'm getting that, yeah.
And then the uh again, continue to call out the paved surface. But then the last thing that I had was the, the building itself. So my suggestion here is, is because we don't know what's gonna happen with that building, let's just, if you're going to do an approval at some point in the future, si- and I'll write, read it, since the existing building is to retain, is to remain, the conforming use is not defined for this building use right now. That approval will need to have a condition that requires a new site plan approval for the proposed building use and for the occupancy of the building to confirm that there is adequate parking and all loading to meet the requirements of the proposed use. So right now, this site plan is for a vehicle storage in the rear with no use in the building. So we're just going to, like I suggest, provide a a, an approval comment that says if you're gonna re-repurpose this building, you need to come back to the planning board for a permit. So my, my comment is basically is, we're not ready for approval yet. They need to address these things and uh, and and basically take all these comments and and resolve it. But the big thing is, is driveway location, turning radiuses at the street so the trucks can come in and out, paved, and a little bit of modifications into this, this in-ground system so the flow can be distributed through the, through the rows. And we can have some observation ports for making sure it's functioning properly. And then a little bit of sediment erosion control and tear this driveway out of the street. And I said I'd be brief. And I said I'd be brief, and I'm done. I can leave this shared screen up there if you'd like.
Who, who would like to address this? Uh, Mr. Whitney or Mr. Hardy?
Can I speak?
Mr. Sullivan's here with me. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so Sean Hardy, I'm here with Robert Sullivan. I think you would like to say something.
Hi, um, I, I had difficulty uh, addressing the board with the Zoom meeting last month. And that's probably why you, you're seeing something similar to what we presented last month. The five-foot buffer along that um, I would say my southerly border along the driveway is there for a reason, and the reason being is the house itself has an architectural feature on the side, which is a bay window. And if I have a tent and the trucks themselves barely squeeze through a twelve-foot door. So for me to have ten feet um, of a buffer strip along that uh, line with Mr. Kearney leaves me approximately twenty feet, because we, let's just agree that twenty-nine point nine is thirty feet. So that leaves me twenty feet. But that twenty feet really isn't twenty feet when you take into consideration the architectural feature of the bay window on that side of the house, take away another three feet. So now we're down to seventy, uh, seventeen feet. And we have to have a driveway that is going to allow the trucks to pass in and out safely. Um, I prefer not to have to replace a bay window because the side of the truck clipped it. So that's why we're asking for approval for the five feet to the left. Um, we've decided to, in good faith, to get towards sixty percent of uh, lot coverage, remove the driveway to the right of the home, which is on the northerly side. Um, we, we were asked, the engineer asked last month why um, it was necessary. And the reasoning or the logic behind it for me was, as long as there were small cars on the property, they would stay to the right of the home. And the big equipment would come in and out of the main driveway. And the traffic or coming in and out is very infrequent, and I think the neighbors can attest to that. Mr. Kearney may not. He may feel it's not that way, but the reality is, all the equipment has been off the property since the middle of December. It's come back, not all of it, but one or two pieces have come back for a day and then have been right back out again. Um, so that was that. And we're, we are, I'm asking for um, an ability to go beyond the sixty percent along that industrial uh, to industrial zoning because I need the space to be able to park these trucks so they hide behind the garage. Um, if we have to give the eleven feet along that side, when these trucks are parked in that storage zone, they're forty-seven feet long. They're really going to project out beyond the garage and from the street. If you looked up the driveway, there would be half, covering halfway of the driveway. So that's the reasoning behind that area along the garage. That's all I have at the moment.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know the rest of the board, but I certainly feel that we need a ten-foot buffer zone between a residential uh, piece of property and uh, commercial piece of property. And I think that's what uh, Mike Peralta said also.
No, I agree, Mr. Chair. On the ten-foot buffer.
It's the requirement of zoning that the driveway be ten foot off of a property line. So it, it, it's the driveway placement in case that is ten foot of, of, of a green space. And as for the second driveway, that violated the zoning to the north because that needed to be ten foot off the property. And you can see it was right on the property line. You can't have two driveways within seventy-five feet of each other, and these are within seventy-five feet of each other. And there was no reason to have two driveways on this property to begin with. But the use, it's a temporary type of, of event when the trucks are either going out to be stored someplace else for the winter time for use. Here in the summertime, they bring them back in in the spring. So it's not that this is constant in and out. It, there was no supporting reasons why there was a hardship to require or allow a second driveway. And this was hatched out at one of the previous hearings.
I mean, if the requirement is for a ten-foot buffer, there's no way we can give these guys a five-foot buffer. They've got to go with the ten-foot buffer.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question to be, um, play devil's advocate for a second. Um, I'm agreeing with everything I've heard, and of course, we want everything, you know, we want, when it can be done correctly, to do it correctly. But I'm, I'm just looking sort of at the fill, the whole, when did this transform from a um, exercise in grading fill and getting the drainage? Now we've taken care of that and gravel. But where does it, where did the site plan review jump into this, where we're looking at buffer zones and uh, driveways and things that were pre-existing conditions or whatever? But di- does the fill, I guess I'm asking the question, does, does the fill bylaw, when it gets to a point, is there some trigger that, that may, is making us look at buffers, uh, uh, besides the fact we, you know, we wanted the neighbors to be happy? Um, is there, is, why are we looking at that?
What happened originally was that we had a complaint, uh, which is way back in April, I believe. And I'm not sure of the date, and I know I could take my day timer from last year and give you, probably give you the exact dates. It seems to me it was in April. We sent a letter. The letter was not responded to. Subsequent to that month, a month or so later, I received another complaint about fill. As you know, this was all covered in previous years by the Board of Selectment. Uh, and they decided that the planning board should have it. That's when we got involved. In this particular situation, I viewed it. I did then uh, send an, have another letter sent to uh, the property owner telling them to cease and desist. And on a particular weekend, uh, I re, I believe uh, there was a phone message left at the planning board office. I got that message on, I believe, the following Monday morning from a, a secretary. And I called uh, Mr. Sullivan. And he told me, basically, I had no clue on how many yards were, and it was less than two hundred and fifty yards. I told him, and he wanted to know what proof I had. I told him I know a little bit about it, and I know there was more than two hundred and fifty yards moved. From there, we continued on. We found out afterwards that uh, there'd been a complaint with the building and uh, the enforcement officer. That had been somewhat followed up. Uh, then it, it, it just went from bad to worse. We finally got uh, someone to come into our meeting and explain what was going on. It was after we said there would be, would, this would be done legally. We got a hold of town council. We, we, we did a lot of things until finally, uh, Mr. Whitney got involved with it, and we've been progressing since then, so. And, and as far as the site plan is concerned, with, all, all we were doing originally was the amount of, of fill being brought onto a piece of property or removed from a piece of property. It was quite obvious it was more than two hundred and fifty yards.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Ronald Whitney, on behalf of the applicant, I just wanted to address the question that was raised, and that is, how did we get to the point of a site plan approval? Um, Mr. Sullivan, there's no doubt about it, is making a change in the use of that property um, in what he proposes to do there. And that's why I felt it appropriate to go forward and file a site plan application. I think what we've heard, this has been a, you know, a learning process, as most of these are, that come before you. Uh, what we've heard tonight is that we need a turning radius showed on at Adam Street, that we need a ten-foot buffer on this southerly lot line, that we need to address the catch basin at the street, that we need to address the in-ground system and the driveway location. And so I asked the board uh, for your indulgence to come back before you next month um, with the uh, those revisions to the plan. Um, and, and just to ask the board uh, one more time. Uh, does the board feel, if we were to address all those concerns adequately, that the board would be able to forego, or would consider foregoing the buffer strips that are shown on the plan along the northerly and the rear lot lines? Um, I suggest that only because there is nothing, to my knowledge, in the zoning bylaw that requires a buffer strip between two industrial properties. We've put those buffer strips in there to bring the lot coverage down below the sixty percent that's set forth in the bylaw. Um, but if the board were uh, somewhat open to the uh, if we could address the, the issues that were brought forward by uh, Mr. Peralta, um, would the board be somewhat open or would they be open, I should say, to uh, negating the need for those buffer strips on the north side in, on the rear? Um, and, and we would bring a special permit application before you want to um, exceed the coverage of the lot over sixty-four percent.
Michael, what's your opinion on that?
I previously, in two other letters, addressed that sixty percent lot coverage um, being exceeded. And um, again, the plans are showing that there's truck parking in back here and that there's room to put the trucks in there. And the only reason for the buffer, basically, is to eliminate the uh, the violation of zoning. Again, if they can put the trucks back there and make them fit, then there's no reason to violate zoning. We really haven't seen a plan, I mean, tonight, someone mentioned that the trucks are forty-seven feet long. Whereas that's forty-seven feet. Not quite sure what trucks are being put there. I thought these were snowplow trucks. Forty-seven foot is not a snowplow truck. So um, if someone could give a, an exhibit to show trucks that want to be parked, then with the reason why they would need to, to exceed the lot coverage, there may be that's something that goes before the board for their consideration. But not having any exhibits or any knowledge of what size trucks and how they're going to stack them on the site, except this depiction that this area is for parking, I can't give you an opinion, and I don't think the board members can, can evaluate that at this point in time.
Yeah, I, I have a disadvantage. I'm not with Mr. Sullivan. He is at a separate location. But uh, Robert, perhaps you could address the board on the type of trucks and the size of trucks?
Um, all the trucks are specifically built for one task, and that's interstate work. So there are ten-wheeled trucks, there are tri axles, um, six-wheel, all-wheel-drive trucks, gross vehicle weight fifty-one thousand pounds or more. Um, they're big trucks, but they're specific for plowing. A tri axle, we're all familiar with them on the roads. They haul asphalt. They do uh, you know, loam, make deliveries, things of that nature, but um, pavement, that's not the business that I'm in. It may be a tri axle truck that you would find doing that type of work, but it's not doing that work because that's not the market that I'm in. So um, that's the size of the equipment. It is when it's fully dressed out with plows on it, forty-seven feet wide. When all the plows are on the ground, it's cutting a path of seventeen feet wide of roadway when it's clearing the roadway. And a travel lane is twelve feet. We have wing plows both left and right in size of the trucks. So they're, they're um, specifically made for one purpose, and that's clearing interstate highways. They are big trucks.
And Robert, do you care to elaborate on what those buffer strips on the rear in the north uh, uh, lot lines, how they impact your ability to park the vehicles there?
Well, as I stated earlier, um, currently, the way they were stored off-season, uh, they were behind the garage as you looked at the property. So you have the house as a buffer, you have the garage as a buffer. As you look from the front of the property, all you see is their bumpers or a little bit of the nose of the truck uh, because they were tucked back behind. Um, when the plows are removed, I store them on the other side of the lot, and that's how it is for the summer. But when they're fully dressed, they can be that long. And with that buffer moving out off the property line, that effectively leaves ten feet of the garage as shielding, and then the rest of the truck will project in front of that, and it'll be clearly visible from the street. It'll also be more difficult with a ten-foot um, buffer on Mr. Kearney's drive, uh, fence and driveway going up. Um, and that trucks are parked right behind the garage. It's going to be a very difficult fit to get back into the main body of that area back there.
Mr. Chairman, you have several people who wanted to ask questions when you're ready.
I'll open some questions.
Okay, so the first one is going to be Pat Carney. Give me a minute, I have to find you. Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so, so here we are again. Several, several meetings into this, very little change in the site plan, as you can see. Um, my, you know, my original question would be this. Um, Mr. Whitney himself admitted that Mr. Sullivan works on his trucks and maintains his trucks in this yard. That being said, would that not make it a maintenance facility rather than an open lot storage? Which would have to, you know, adhere to other, other laws, um, other zoning bylaws. My other, my other concern is that the whole issue about the one-seventy-five-sixty-six buffer strips, twenty feet at least is what it says, and a fence accompanied by suitable plantings. Now, I don't know what he considers suitable plantings. He says he's going to put, put loam and grass. Unless he's growing some sort of grass that grows eighteen feet tall with three-inch stalks, I don't think it's really going to make much of a difference between his, his land and mine as far as a buffer for the smell and the sound and the safety factor. You know, we also have to consider that just recently, we had two construction workers killed in Boston by a truck very similar to the trucks that Mr. Sullivan has on his lot. You know, it, it, no, they don't know the details of the accident, but the truck backed into these two workers into a hole. And, you know, all it had to jump was three feet to kill two people. And I have two grandchildren that play right on the other side of his fence. That's why I would like to see at least a twenty-foot buffer strip. And I would imagine that if, if he can afford eleven feet on one side and eleven feet on the other, then he could afford the twenty feet on my side where he does not have to put a buffer strip on Mr. McKinnon's side. And, and once again, they're submitting a, a, a site plan that indicates that they don't read any of the zoning bylaws. You know, they're putting a buffer strip between industrial and industrial, but putting half a buffer strip between the industrial and the residential. One of my biggest concerns is the retaining wall that's right against my property. Because my property pitches, basically from his southern, from his southern border, um, a, about where he has his snow re- retention area. And it flows to the left, as you look at the picture that's on the screen right now. It flows away from his property onto, onto the properties on, on Hemlock Drive next to me. Um, so I don't understand, you know, I don't understand what his engineer is saying about the way that the land drains in, in the, in the drainage plan. I don't understand why he has to put his snow retention area in the corner near me, which is supposed to be, according to him, the highest corner of his land. I would think that he would want it to all drain into that, to be separated, and then into the catch basins and, and, and out. Um, I mean, this guy has violated multiple, multiple zoning, zoning bylaws. And, and, you know, Mr. Whitney keeps coming back here saying that they want to be, they want to be a good citizen. They want to do the right thing. They want to be a good neighbor. Yet, he's got three restraining, uh, three cease and Yet, he's got three restraining uh three cease and desist orders against him. Not the least of which is directly from the town's attorney demanding that he remove all his commercial equipment from the property. That he can't rent the house out, and that he's supposed to clear the property. And and all this is in the zoning bylaws too, that he's not supposed to be able to. Occupy this property without a certificate of occupancy. He can't get a certificate of occupancy because he hasn't had an approved site plan or a building permit or completed any of the work that needs to be done. And 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 Mr. Rango, for your question about why are we looking at buffer strips and stuff, please come to my house and see what I have to look at every day. You know, and see what I have to deal with every day. This guy's in in and out of there almost every day and and. I I I can try and share some video with you that that will just show you. I'm not, I'm not getting it, but I you know. I can email it to you. Um I've sent a lot of it to you guys already. Um this this has just been egregious and egregious mockery of the planning board. Site plan review, the whole the whole process. And and you know, they just keep coming back like a little kid that gets caught with his hand in the cookie jar. And it's like, oh, is this okay? Oh, is this okay? Oh, is this okay? And they're just trying to wear down the board with just a little bit and a little bit and a little bit, when they know. They know specifically well, Mr. Mr. Whitney, you're an attorney. You can read the zoning by. I can read the zoning by bylaws. And I'm an elevator mechanic, okay? I can understand it. It's worded pretty simply. And you guys have not come back with any of this. And like I said, it's not an open lot storage. He maintains and works on the vehicles. There's trucks in and out of there all the time. There's there's impact guns, there's compressors, there's there's fork trucks running, all kinds of stuff going. So it's not an open lot storage. So I I would say that his application is actually null and void. I would I would urge the board to please just reject his plan. And tell him to start all over again, and maybe the board can move forward when he can actually obey a cease and desist order. That's all I've got. Thank you.
What we have for this?
Yeah, another person would like to speak, and I'm not going to try to pronounce your name. Because I would mess it up, but I'm you you asked to.
Hi, uh thanks for um letting me speak, and I apologize for coming late to the uh. Conversation here. Um his lawyer uses some interesting language. That he's allowed to park his vehicles there. He's been orderly, no complaints regarding Phil. Um trucks don't go in and out, and that they're they're just, you know, between the fall and the winter. Um. Talking about servicing the house and the property, what the future holds for the house. I'm wondering what you're not telling us. You know, you talked about with appropriate planting, coexist, and in good faith. You don't go in good faith and turn a residential property into a commercial one. And I'm confused why we're still talking about zoning and what you can do on the property when it's a residential property. Complaints started on this when you bought the property, when you started cutting down every single tree around it. As far as it's only being used for storage, that's incorrect. Their trucks going in and out all the time. Maybe not the snowplows that you plowed behind it. But you have trucks that are backing into the driveway on the northern side of the property and have to, and that impact traffic on um Route fifty eight. And we're, you know, um Mr. Smith, you talked about. A ten foot buffer between a commercial residential property. It's a residential property that you never got zoning for. I spoke to a young lady at the zoning office when he first started cutting the trees down. Who said it? No permit was ever pulled on it, and zoning hadn't changed. So I'm confused why we're actually still talking about this as opposed to stop it. It's a residential property. You've changed the nature of the house and the neighborhood. As well as piss off every single one of your neighbors. And now you want to talk about coexisting. Really? It's a commercially used property. That's what you've done to it. And it's not just storage. I do hear the engines running. I do see traffic have to stop for your trucks to back in and out. It's not like McKinnon's property where you've got a driveway where they don't impact fifty eight. I'm sure there's more I wanted to say. I'm sure more will come up. But wow, I've never seen someone piss off their neighbor so much. And then say they want to coexist and be in good faith. That's all I have to say right now.
You, the chairman, if I may, just briefly, I know it's getting late, and I appreciate the board's consideration and time, certainly. Also, volunteer capacity, it does not go unnoticed to be heralded for the time that you put in. Uh it's nine fifteen, but I just didn't want to respond to Mr. Kearney and to this gentleman. I'm not sure what his name was. The reality is, this is zoned industrial. This is what Mr. Sullivan proposes to use the property for isn't a lot of use. So it's unfortunate that Mr. Kearney, maybe because the price was right or whatever, bought his house. In a neighborhood that adjoins an industrial property. He took the risk when he did that, that some type of industrial use would go in next door. For years, it was a residential use. Now it seeks to be converted to an industrial use. That's allowed under the zoning bylaws. And so I would go back, Mr. Chairman, to a comment I made earlier, and that is. Although we have some profound difficulties and the board has some profound difficulties with the man. In which Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Kearney and Mr. McKinnon proceeded initially. Mr. Sullivan, out of the three, has been before the board for the past six, seven months. Trying to tweak the plan to a point that would work best for him and would work for the board. The board could look at it in good conscience and pass it as being a plan that would be conducive to the neighborhood. As much as it can be conducive when you have a house next to an industrial zone. And Mr. Sullivan would like to continue in good faith. Um and and he would like to ask the board to continue this hearing the next month. He will come in, he'll address the four issues. We've addressed many issues that have come up before the board. And we're down to the four issues, the turning radius, the ten foot buffer, the catch basins, and the driveway location. I think that does it. I we've got to talk about, I mean, I I would like to talk, and I don't want to label this. I'm sure everybody wants to go home. I would like to just make one last pitch, and then I'm gonna just shut up and let the board. Um do its carry on its will. Uh but with respect to the paving. There are so many properties that are in the locus. There's at least five that I pointed out. That are similar type of properties with trucks apart that are not paved driveways. They're gravel driveways. Mr. Perrault makes a good point. What if there is a spill? What I would say to the board is that. My client paid a lot of money for the property, and he knows he's an astute businessman. He knows that oil drops into that ground, that oil is going, he's going to own that oil. And he's going to have to do thousands of dollars worth of reparations to try to fix that. It's no different than Mr. Kearney, assuming for a minute that he heats his house with oil. He's got a two hundred dollar, a two hundred gallon tank in his basement that could spray a leak. Or Mr. McKinnon to the to the north, or anybody else that runs these kind of facilities. That's always a risk. It's a risk that we try our best to avoid it, to protect ourselves against. And I can assure you that Mr. Sullivan is no different than anyone else, that he's going to do his best. To make sure that it never happens. If there were a problem, it would be probably six or seven or eight gallons of oil. Out of a truck that would pour into the ground. That would be a a big problem for Mr. Sullivan. He knows that. And he he would do everything he can to avoid that from happening. Thank you, Mr. Chip.
Uh Mr. Perrault, you have something want to add or what you think that they can come up with some of this stuff for the next meeting or what?
Uh the review letter is very specific, and the the mock, they have the mock up. So there's no reason why um they can't address all the issues that are presented. They're very clear. Uh and 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 I have been available to the design engineer if there was a question for a clarification. So I still am available. And the only thing I can add uh is that instead of spending. Thousands upon thousands of dollars for oil spill cleanup in the future. Since you require to have a hard surface, paved surface. Let's put it down now. Spend less money now. And provide the means for spill prevention and protection of the environment now. Then we all throw the dice, and then somebody has to clean it up in the future.
That's a good point. Yeah, yes.
I don't I don't know about the rest of the board, but I thought that's where we were the last meeting. And Mike was going to be open and available for to help them.
And this is my point. I don't, I think it would be a waste of our time and Mr. Whitney's time and everybody else's time. If sometime between now and whenever they appear before us the next time, they sit down with Mr. Perrault. And they address his point by point letters like everyone else earlier tonight. Uh with the, you know, the the development there, you know, at Spruce Street, where they addressed the comment letters, and they went over it point by point. Yeah, Mr. Whitney, with six or seven months doing this, and Mike is, Mr. Perrault has specifically done letters. That, you know, request these things to be done point by point. I personally wouldn't want to see you guys back here again before us until. You sit down with Mike and you address his points, his 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 concerns point by point, and show us how you're going to address them. I mean, otherwise, what's the point? I mean, you've you've clearly violated the law. I mean, Mr. Whitney, to fix the to clean up six or seven gallons of of oil. Cost a hell of a lot more than a a couple hundred bucks. It's a hell of a lot more money than that.
I never said it cost a couple hundred.
Yeah, well, whatever it is, but the point is, it seems like it seems like this is going on and on. Let's. Have your clients sit down with our engineer and address these points, and until you do that, don't come back here. I mean, you know, don't waste all of our time.
I think it'd be in everybody's best interest if Attorney Whitney, his client, and his design engineer meet. Go through the review letter. And if they cannot comply with anything on the plan, then no specific items would warrant a a conversation with myself. And then. A resolution could be made, but. At least, we're not going through every point by point, wasting a lot of time and effort. Let them come up to a conclusion of what they're going to do and what they cannot do or will not do. And and then we can have a discussion with them, and then I can report back to the board, and then they can make their next submission.
That's precisely what I'd like to see. Rather than have us go through this again, let's have a resolution on this the right way.
Mr. Hare would like to say something.
Yeah, I I mean, and I guess the point of engineering wise, you know, drainage, very minor. Showing a radius out in the street, very minor. But even on some of the review, like say, for instance, the it has to be a paved surface. Mr. Perrault. Points out in his comments that. It can, unless otherwise authorized, pursue into a waiver voted by the majority of the planning board. So. Some of the things that we're asking you or haven't fully done. Exactly how it says is because there is a unless. Dot, 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 that's available to us. So that those are the what we were asking for. Those are the the types of things. You know, the the buffer zone has to be X number of feet or. A fence with appropriate plantings. So we're trying to hone in on what that exactly would be or what would be acceptable. Um you know, those are the big main issues, the same as the the lot coverage. Sixty percent unless waived by the planning board. So. Though those aren't the types of things that necessarily two engineers can agree on. I I'm trying to represent what my client's asking for, and he's asking the 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 people that are tasked with saying yes or no, which is the board. I I can certainly show a piping layout on a drainage. Um basin to clarify that. I can certainly call out radiuses down by the driveway, but those other questions. Just by nature of how they're written, aren't for the two engineers to necessarily decide on. It's for, you know, unless the board says, yeah, that's okay.
So if you look at my last letter for the last review. Specifically, I put in that letter for the board to give some guidance. One of the areas of guidance was on the pavement. And and Bob Soper is absolutely correct. At the last board meeting, the board said paved. At the last board meeting, the board said ten foot. And the only reason it's not twenty feet for Mr. Kearney is that his property is. Is when an industrial abuts a residential property, residentially zoned property. And that that property is not residentially zoned, it's residentially used. So therefore, the ten foot dimension is a function of the driveway to a side lot line. And that's where the ten foot comes in from. But the board made it perfectly clear with all those points on the file, on that letter from the previous review. Of what they wanted to see on this plan, and the paved surface was one of them. So there shouldn't have been a need for another comment. This go round, it should have been shown as paved. Same with the lot coverage. The board made it perfectly clear, conform with zoning. And therefore, you you know, your engineering plan did conform with zoning. So for the majority of these items that have recommented. These are things that were made pretty well clear at the last hearing, and then now brought back again for this hearing.
Mike, I I Mr. Perrault, I I agree, and I was going to say the same thing. We we did weigh in on these gr- these gray areas that the planning board has the ability to uh make it uh an alternative. Um and I think I think we've just stated that quite quite strictly, Mr. Mr. Whitney.
I I I agree. You've stated very clearly. I will huddle with my client at this point. Previously, I have allowed the engineers to speak to one another. And I haven't tried to invoke myself in that discussion because. All of these issues that we're talking about tonight are engineering issues. Uh but I will huddle with my client, and uh my client will in turn uh speak. With Mr. Hardy. I'll speak with Mr. Hardy. We'll get in touch with Mr. Perrault. But I think we've heard from the board what they could be willing to do. Uh just one last thing, and I again, I don't relate this. We heard you about the ten foot buffer strip. We heard you about the driveway, the location with the driveway. We heard you about the paving, but we didn't hear you about the buffer strips. And I think what my client is saying is that the buffer strip, which is, which is not required. On the rear of the lot and is not required on the north boundary. Would the board consider if we came back and addressed those issues that you've talked about? Uh just ask, would the board consider us doing away with those buffer scripts on the north and the rear?
It 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 might be out, be able to be arranged. Uh certainly would be a vote of the board. Uh I don't know whether anybody wants to jump in for it right now. Perhaps, Mike, you could touch on it.
Yeah, I I. Your design engineer actually put those buffers on there in order to.
He did. He did comply with the sixty percent, Mike.
Correct, but that sixty percent is sixty percent. So if you, your client wants to continue to have that area screened by the garage. And you want to get closer to the to the to the industrial property line to the north. Then create more green space to the other side in order to maintain your less than sixty percent coverage. So you can shift things around a little bit in order to do that. So for example, the the abutter wants to have a little more green space. So maybe you can shift things around a little bit in order to accomplish that, and at the same time, accomplish your client's needs. To have uh a little more um of the paved surface behind the existing garage. So shifting things around and maintaining your your zoning requirement, um that 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 should be suitable.
But the only reason I bring it up again is because we can exceed the sixty percent by way of spec. We can exceed the sixty percent by way of special permit, so if the board. In their discretion. Deems a special permit appropriate. In order that Mr. Sullivan can use his property, given what he's testified to tonight. Relative to the size of his truck, so he can use it in a he and and. You know, the maximum best use for the property. All I'm asking the board, I know what your opinion is, Mike. I'm asking the board if the board would have an opinion of because. It is in the discretion of the board to grant a special permit to exceed the sixty percent. You and I both know the sixty percent requirement is in the zoning by law. I agree.
I'm just asking. Let 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 me be very clear, if you haven't figured it out yet. You guys need to conform. As far as I'm concerned.
Can I can I say something here? In the last. In the last um, Zoom meeting. I listened to it from start to finish, and I think it was uh, the engineer. David Johnson um, regarding uh, is it Spruce Street? That property, but there was a um, this a description of the metrics that the board uses. For going over the sixty percent. And there were three. Things that they were looking for. Increase in runoff. We've addressed that. Uh, impact. On increase of vehicle trips. We we hardly have the vehicle trips to begin with, and the increase of the percentage. Of the lot area wouldn't affect the vehicle trips anyways.
And the impact and the impact on the neighborhood, do do them all. Go through it. I I don't agree with you, so.
Um, that was the third one, and the impact on the abutting land uses.
Yep.
Um, it's dead storage that.
And it's it's pretty obvious you have some issues other than the dead storage on that side, so. You're not going to convince me, sorry.
It just seems like that if you had paid attention to the minutes of the last meeting. We wouldn't be having this discussion tonight, I mean, this is the point that Mike made that. We talked about this at the last meeting and Bob has made it, but we talked about this, all these points were made at the last meeting. And here we are. In March, talking about the same thing again. So go back and read the minutes and and do what you're supposed to do. Conform.
One of the things. At the last meeting. I was unable to get through on the Zoom meeting, so. We are here in a way with some similarities, but there have been a lot of changes. Last time. We were above eighty percent of lot coverage, now we have it down to sixty percent, fifty nine point nine maybe. So there has been some changes. The driveway is the same, I agree. Um, but I explained to you why the driveway was there. Now we're trying and we removed the driveway on the north side of the property, so there have been changes. For you to sit there and say that we haven't done those things is disingenuous. We're trying to get to the goal where we both can agree we can work with this plan.
Tony would like to speak again if you want him to. Mr. Patrick Carney, he would like to speak again.
No, no. Because we're gonna go on online.
I I I would like to miss a suggestion to postpone this to the next meeting, I think you guys got the hint.
I'm just I I'm just gonna jump in right here real quick, so everybody here knows. The next filing deadline is March twelfth.
So you need to get this stuff now.
They need it needs to be in my hands on Friday, March twelfth.
Is that something that can be done, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
All right, in that in that case, uh, we. Continue the hearing until. April. Fifth. If you need May. We can make it go two months. It could be May third.
I should be able to do that.
May third.
May third.
Please, Mr. Chairman.
I can make April.
You can make April. It's up to you, Sean.
I can do it by April.
Okay.
All right, then the motion would be to continue the hearing until. April third. April fifth. Motion made, seconded.
Second, yeah.
Second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm voting to abstain because frankly, I if I have my druthers, I just go straight denial. Because I don't think they've been acting in good faith, to be perfectly honest. So I'll I'll give them. Next month, but I'm not gonna vote in favor of this.
All right. On the motion, all who's in favor of uh, April fifth, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Yeah, listen. All right, we continue the hearing until. That day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, brother, uh. I don't know where we go from here, uh.
Minutes.
What the uh.
Sorry, I keep disappearing, but I keep getting a cramp on my leg. I can hear I can hear you though.
Mrs. Riley and Mr. Franny are here if you want to discuss that memorandum that Mr. Riley.
We can do that, Mr. Riley. John.
Ladies and gentlemen. I sorry, I missed part of your meeting, which.
You were lucky one, yeah.
I uh. I I just wanted to put this in front of you, uh, Joe Franny is still listening, um, he's here. Uh, I I put a letter together to the board on February twenty fourth. Um, as a result of the new law that just got passed at the at the state by the state, the housing, they call it the housing choice law. And I hope the boardrooms had a chance to read the letter. Or I won't have to repeat everything it says, but. It basically at the state level. Creates some um, some incentives, it 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 revised some zoning definitions, it creates opportunities for towns to. Opt into certain things that may or may not be attractive to different towns. And it also uh, set some incentives for towns to opt into other things, and one of the things that we were directly addressing was. It states that a towns with commuter rail service or commuter bus service, but for our discussion, just commuter rail, like Abington. Um, they now have a part of this new law, the housing choice law, which is an amendment to the state zoning law. That says that a a town with a commuter rail service. Um, if they don't create a zoning district that allows multifamily use within a quarter mile of the railroad station. The town could be ineligible for several different grant programs. You're not required to do it, you just would become ineligible, um, but. It's something I'm sure the town and the planning board specifically. Needs to make some decisions and address. And this kind of aligned with a previous discussion I had with the board on behalf of Mr. Franny about, I don't know, it was two months ago or so. Where they were looking at the property. On the western side of Progress Street between Progress Street and the river, the Shamo Kuska Camp River, which runs along the Anderson property. And. We have been discussing potentially filing a petition. Um, to rezone that specific area, which is approximately thirty plus acres. Um, into either an expanded TOD district. The Transit Oriented Development District, which surrounds the commuter rail. Or an expanded R twenty district, which is located just south of. This parcel in particular, this area in particular. But then this housing choice law came up. And. If the planning board thought it was in the town's best interest to. Make a zoning district. Allow. Multi-family as of right, meaning no special permits needed, no use ferrences needed, you still have to do site plan review, you might have to do some um. Zoning relief if you can't do set can't comply with setbacks or things. But you wouldn't need a special permit or a use ferrence for the use multifamily, whether it's three units or thirty three units. Excuse me. So one thought was the planning board, if they wanted to go down that route, would be to amend the Todd district by law. Which currently allows multifamily. Standalone multifamily by special permit, that would have to be revised to say you can do it as of right. Um, subject to site plan approval. Uh, it does allow some multifamily if it's a mixed use. Um, as of right, as long as it's a mixed use. Or alternatively, what this letter proposes is. To specifically create a new zoning district in a limited area, but within that quarter mile required radius. Um, which. Call it what you may, I I. I I use the term commuter residential. That this specific area, thirty acre area can't be one parcel of land that's spot zoning, it's gonna be a rather, you know. Good sized parcel of land. Would be potentially in its own new separate zoning district instead of expanding one of the existing zoning districts. I explain my reasons why in the letter. Um. And if I can share the screen, I'll just put that map up that I shared with you guys, so we can kind of see it. So this is Center Avenue, Route one twenty three right here. This is the train station and the green is the current transitional, it's TOD, I think I wrote TC there, it should be TOD. Transition transitional.
Transit Transit Orientated Development.
Right, should be TOD, that's my mistake, TOD is in this area right now. Multifamily is allowed only with special permit unless it's a mixed use. This is the R twenty where it's allowed by special permit, this is where the apartments are. Um, the Beacon Properties Apartments. This is the train line, the railroad tracks right along the edge right here. And this is the property in question, which if you see right now, it's yellow or orange, whatever. It's R thirty, we're proposing that instead that section. Which is from the western side of Progress Street. To the river, which goes along. The Anderson property, which many people know is the Spencer Pizza Spencer's Pizza property. That's currently commercial. The Franny property is currently vacant. And the majority of the properties on Center Avenue are actually all of them on Center Avenue are already multifamily. So if the board was inclined to. You know, to in order to preserve eligibility for the state grants. Uh, if they wanted to either convert TOD. To allow multifamily as of right. Or maybe you don't want to do that and maintain the current controls you have. And you could allow it over here. Again, there already are, with the exception of one single family house, every other property is already multifamily. Uh, and Anderson has some mild commercial use. So what would the future for the Anderson property be if they ever decided to sell the property, rip the buildings down? Would you like it to go residential? Which I think there's some benefit to that because it's next to the river and next to Island Grove and next to wetlands and next to the the town wells, which are just south. Or would you allow, would you rather have it be TOD and allow some commercial in this area? Um, it obviously if the board is inclined to do the proposed commuter residential type of district. Then, you know, obviously, Mr. Franny, Mr. Anderson, you know, that we would work with you. If you decide not to change anything, then they need to make some sort of. Uh, citizens petition to decide what they'd like to do in the property. And. Uh, we wanted to put that on the table for your discussion. Uh, if it's something we want to put it as part of a public hearing in April for a town meeting in May or. Maybe even further down the road, but um, the longer you don't have the as of right multifamily. Then you can no longer apply for those grant programs.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Chair. I'd like to speak in my biggest fear, I'd I'd like to speak if we're gonna do this. I go, you know, and I've read the law and I read what Mr. Riley proposed. I think we ought to go with the new district because my biggest fear is because we've had. A couple of things with the Todd district, you never know what could come out on town meeting. But conceivably, somebody could come out and say, let's repeal the Todd district, which I don't think would be in the best interest of the town. So I mean, if we uh. Right now, we have the control of the Todd district by having a multifamily by special permit. If we extend the Todd district, you know, if we have a proposal to extend Todd district, he will control. I'm just afraid that people would do away. The way I read the law is it supports the creation of a new district. And uh, you know. It's something we have to address and I I. I think. My personal opinion is that we go with a new district rather than extend the Todd district.
So you you're suggesting that that it be something other than TOD?
Yeah, to create the new to create the new district is Mr. Riley has proposed, it doesn't have to be the name that he's proposed, could be a different name. But. You know, I say, my biggest concern is conceivably, we could lose. The Todd district. So if we do a new district, we still have the Todd district. Where we have the control because you have to get a special permit to do the multifamily like we have now. And yet we. Conform with the new state law. To, you know, to encourage housing around the train station, which is what this does. In addition to the Todd. I think that would be the best course for us to uh, support.
What kind of grants are out there, Bruce?
There are.
What kind of grants?
Actually, a lot of them, Bob. Um, the town manager had me attend. Several webinars. Um, they've kind of flipped up the portal for grant application in the state. And they've created um, a community development grant or some kind of community grant is new. With a downtown initiative. And then they've um. Got money in the affordable housing that went to OCPC. They've just asked us for uh, to apply for technical assistance if we needed it. With affordable housing.
So so is it? I'm trying to word my question, is it, we just need to create a district? Or is there, I guess, let me throw this out there, is there advantage to making the Todd district? Into this new district?
That's your option, you either amend an existing district. Or create a new district. Um, you could theoretically cut off part of the Todd district and, you know, create a new district somewhere. So it's it's up to for the board's consideration to do that, obviously, and I did look at the programs that they specifically mentioned in the state statute. They talk about grant money from the Housing Choice Initiative. Um, which, once you're a housing choice. Community, you you're exclusively allowed to apply for that. The Local Capital Projects Fund. Which is money that's transferred from the gaming or casino revenue. Uh, I'm not sure, not all of the revenue, but some of it goes to that fund. It appears to be that one of the bigger ones is the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. Um, if you're eligible for that, just last year alone, some local examples. Hanover got one point two million to redo an intersection there, Hanover Mall. Stotan got two point five million to do some sewer extension work. Avon got one million uh, for roads and sidewalks and Brockton got two point six million for roads and sidewalks. You would no longer be able to apply for any of that if you don't have a designated district. And so I'm assuming the board would like to not have a large district. That would allow. Multifamily as a right and just in looking at it because of the. This this location of this confirmed conformed because it's in the within the quarter mile. But because of that river and because of Island Grove Pond, because of the wetlands. And because that frankly, Mr. Franny is is the only undeveloped parcel. You know what you're getting into, you're kind of limited there. So it's not going to be. You know, three hundred units in there.
I get it.
Yeah, I mean, you limit the number of you, I tell you about that Mass Works Grant in Stotan. What that was was the uh, Campanelli Industrial Park. It's on Stotan Brockton Line, didn't have sewer. They use the Mass Works Grant to get sewer in there. And you know, and that was part of the town that wasn't sewn. Uh. I mean, I used to work for OCPC, but uh, I don't anymore. But I think if we. Create this new district and tie in that and tie with the Mass Works. And you know, we explain this on town meeting floor, the rationale for why we want to do this. I think this would be something that. You know, would be a good thing and and could pass town meeting. I think it would be, I think it would be more complicated to to explain. Why we want to amend the Todd district to accomplish these goals.
Let let me throw this out there, it look just quickly looking at that property, they wouldn't be going out onto Summer Street, it would be coming out under one twenty three, more than likely.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't this invite a zero summer street to show up? To to I mean, this is a big chunk of property. What what did you say again, Mr. Sean?
Well, zero summer streets in the Todd. In the Todd, you have to get a special permit to do the multifamily.
This property, if I can put it up again. This area, you know, uh, see if I can. Hold it up a little bit for us. So this area right here, again, this is west side of Progress Street, these are all single family houses in the R thirty district, we don't want to touch them. This is Mr. Well, it's actually a number of properties, there's some. Uh, Mr. Franny has a piece of property, the Anderson property, then there's a number of three families and six, uh, the condos, there's an eight unit condo out here, and there's uh, one single family house out here. Um, the majority of this property, Mr. Franny's property is wetland, so that won't be developed. Um, the Anderson property borders on the river. So if and when that's developed, it'll be subject to wetlands regulations there. And again, it's long term planning. If. What would you want to see five, ten, fifteen years from now? If uh, the Anderson property or any of these properties. If uh, the Anderson property or any of these properties get redeveloped or developed. Housing? Or commercial or a mix of commercial? And it being within the quarter mile walking distance to the commuter rail, it seems like it might solve. Obviously, Mr. Franny's in favor of this because that has been his proposal all along. Was to build some multifamily up, housing out on the, the upland part of his property. Um. That we're going to pursue either way. Um, it, but by doing it, limiting it to this area, even though it's thirty acres. It's much, it's probably, I would just guesstimating, don't hold me to it. Probably half of that is actual buildable land.
Fifteen acres and it would be all residential as opposed to potential of residential and commercial on the Todd.
Right. And you know, the Anderson property, those current businesses can stay there. They'd be grandfathered in. Until, but they wouldn't be able to bring in like a new, a different type of business. A different pizza place could come in if Spencer's ever decided to sell, but you know, so. The current businesses will be protected until the decision was made in the future to change uses, then they'd have to go residential. Um, those three families and four families out on Center Ave right now would now comply with zoning because. If you were to go this route. It just appeared as I was reading the statute, it just kind of a light went off and it said, this might be a win-win for the town to maintain their grant status. Um, for the old property owners here and really for the town in general, that what would you like to see around? These environmental sensitive areas. Mind you also. The town wells are here at the end of Myers Avenue. And the well protection district encompasses all of this area also goes all the way up to Center Ave. So that part of the zoning bylaw. Does, tries to prohibit certain commercial uses from going into the well protection district for obvious reasons. So making this a residential district. Multifamily residential district solves a lot of issues and addresses a lot of future planning.
Yeah, because it would be tied into town sewer. And you wouldn't have the environmental issues that we just talked about at length. You know, at the last one, uh. And again, if you expand the Todd, you're still, you've, you're going to bring up the fact that. Commercial is allowed in that and people would be saying, well, you're expanding commercial over to. That other property, but if you go to new district, it's just residential. Grandfathered in with the, with the uh, current commercial. You know, it accomplishes what the state wants us to do. It accomplishes. What the grant money is out there to do and it increases residential. Um.
I also. I included in the package, a proposed bylaw, which I modeled after the transit oriented development bylaw. But then removed some of the commercial and parts of it. And tried to push it towards what the mass choice, the housing choice law wanted. I offered for you to pick apart, edit, suggest changes. It's, you know, I just use this, this, the framework of our existing bylaws to, to utilize for this purpose. Um. And.
I think if we go forward with that, Sean, we'll do that anyway, you know, to make sure that we're happy with it.
Well, what, what I'm hoping, I, I, so I know you guys will be scheduling some public hearings for some zoning amendments in the, in probably in April. I don't know if you're going to do it a separate night or regular night, whatever you're doing. Um, that if the board. You know, is inclined to at least consider it, then perhaps it should go on the agenda and we should kind of. You know, really look at it. In, you know, edit it as much as possible. Getting in, being ready for that hearing. So if the board does vote to recommend at the town meeting, it's a good solid bylaw.
Sean, did I miss language in here that limits the density at the unit sector we built into this district?
There's part of the statute says three things. In order to be a multifamily housing district that would qualify for the law and keep you eligible. It has to be, the multifamily housing district. Um, cannot be subject to age restrictions. It must be suitable for families with children. So basically it can't be only fifty-five and over. Um, it must be located within a quarter mile of the commuter rail station, which it is. And then it has this other, this third prong must have a minimum gross density of at least fifteen units per acre. And I don't know exactly what that means yet because it, they're going to promulgate regulations. I don't know if that means fifteen units per buildable acre, fifteen units per acre. That being said. Um. We're still subject to lot coverage, available sewer, site plan review and, and all that stuff. So even if you wrote it to allow me to put fifteen units on an acre, we don't have to.
Well, so that's, this is my question right here is how many billable acres do you think is in that whole area?
Well, you, you like undeveloping Mr. Franny's area, let's call it just that. Mr. Franny had total property of sixteen and a half acres roughly, and I was just looking on a plan that surveyed, does he, they didn't. Um, list what was upland, what was wetland. My guess is. Probably a third, no more than half of it is upland. Um, probably less than half of it is upland. So call it at best, I would say eight acres. It's probably more like six.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my fear is that. I have a number of issues with this, but the main is that if it is not capped, the density is not capped. You are going to get a zero summer street. This is a bigger site than zero summer street. And I don't think that's appropriate. We have a ton of land still around the. The train station that's not developed yet. So I don't think we need to be creating another higher density zoning district.
Understood. And I want to continue to look at that because again, it's not well defined in that original statute. They say they're going to promulgate regulations. Um, I could tell you that. Mr. Franny's text to me, he says it's about five acres of uplands. Okay, thank you, Joe. Um. Um. Without taking. You know, things away from Mr. Franny, we have no intention of putting fifteen units on an acre or whatever. And I know the board though has to write it in to protect itself. Um, we're willing to work in that regard. If there's a way we can do it, I need to find some more regulations to back that up.
Well, my one request I have, Mr. Chairman, is that we specifically request our town council. To advise us what we need to do to. Apply a bye-bye this law. All the changes we need to make. All the definitions, all, everything. Um, I want to hear it from them. As to how we come in compliance with this. And you know, all the next steps, if that's. If that makes sense.
Liz, would you make sure we get that information from them?
And also make a suggestion that uh. Laurie Munsey, who's the Director of Comprehensive Planning. And Economic Development at OCPC, she was the co-author of that. You know, that housing study that we did, the town did. And you know, give Laurie a call at OCPC and you know, talk to her about this. Because I'm sure that she's studying law. And uh, she'd be a good person to talk to.
Bruce, if you can give me your contact information, I'd love to reach out. I totally agree with Rick. I'd rather, I'd rather have town council review this and not just me because I am not town council. And I want to say to anybody who's watching this video, this, this meeting, whether it's live or on tape. This is another example of where the town having a town planner would be incredibly valuable. For the benefit of the town in short term and long term. Because they would also be able to watch.
Sure.
So now that you don't work there, Bruce, you can reach out to us.
But Mr. Riley, I will uh. I'll send you, I'll message you Laurie's uh, contact. I'm not going to put this on TV.
Yeah.
I'll message your contact information.
Sean, just, just so you know, right now I'm not comfortable with this. I, my preference would be to amend the TOD district. To take out the special permit requirement. And maybe add some language that makes it also appealable to include commercial components with it.
And that's fine too. We, we, I'm not trying to push you either way. I just think there has to be some sort of. Decision. If you guys go this way, Mr. Franny and Mr. Anderson will make a decision whether to go with you or, or to try to. You know, make it R twenty or, or maybe they want to go Todd. I don't, I don't know what they'll do. But when this. Housing choice law just kind of became a different part of the equation and I think the board had to be aware of.
You know, I'll, I'll look at this. For my new employers now at the, you know, the, the Monmouth Chusset Valley Planning Commission. And uh, I'll talk to John Hill, who's my supervisor. And I'll ask them what they're doing up there, you know, maybe he can give you some guidance as far as this goes to, you know. Take advantage of your technical ability.
Yeah, I mean, I wish we had three more months to talk about it, but with town meeting being on May twenty-fourth. We'll need to make a decision if you want to make any amendments. To either existing districts or new districts. Um, and maybe you don't, maybe you push it off more. I, I don't know, but I just thought it should be something that the board should discuss.
I think we should act because you know, the money's there. And the encouragement is there.
We need somebody to go after that money.
Todd or create a new district, whatever, but we need to.
All right, uh. We'll, we'll get that information anyway. Uh, uh, we're probably going to have to hold a, hold a special meeting at some point. We also have uh, all our uh. Discussions on, on all our articles that we want to bring up on a town meeting and while you're here, Sean, could you tell me whether or not uh. We should waste money again. After doing it at least twice, if not three times, it's over a thousand dollars for advertising and then the town doesn't take it up.
Right, I um. I, I think you should move forward. I think you need to move forward. Um, la, at the last town meeting, there was much, there was a concern about how long town meeting was gonna go because of COVID and all and. Things were kind of, people were nervous. And as you saw. There was a, there was an agreement or a vote to remove the zoning things in order to perhaps shorten the town meeting. And then they, it was a second vote to keep the marijuana zoning article on and that went at length, so.
Um, that was very uh, inconsiderate of a, a lot of people concerned and I have a real. Axe decline on that thing and someday I'll get a chance to express.
I am very.
That was not right.
Um, but that being said, um. You know, some of, some of those zoning articles are things or amendments are things that the board or the town may want to. Consider at the town meeting as it's scheduled right now. It is Monday, May twenty-fourth. Uh, as it is right now, it's going to be in the auditorium once again. Um, and we would have overflow seating in the gym if we had more than eighty or ninety people in it. Um. If, if. God is with us, we will have a, a. A lot of vaccinated people in this town. Um, for any potential fall town meeting. I don't know if there's anything scheduled for the fall, but by next May. Uh, hopefully we have um, a full, you know, more than a hundred and fifty people at a town meeting. But this May, the quorum will remain at seventy-five due to the state emergency, the public health emergency.
But do. It, uh, the thing that concerns me is that we hold these hearings and everything and, and then. Uh, we go to town meeting and they say we're only going to discuss money articles. Then the purpose of us having all these zoning articles is, is just a waste of time for the planning board. For the town, for their money. And uh, so I really. It, it includes the zoning uh, for this property on, on, on Center Avenue. Uh. All that stuff, we need, we need to. Get something concrete from perhaps the board of selectmen. I, I, I don't know, or the town that, or you know.
Yeah, I, I think, and I don't know of anything that's on the war, I mean, the warrant just opened, so I, I, but I haven't heard anything. Any scuttlebutt of anything that's going to be um, you know, controversial or uh, uh, an extended debate or anything. So I don't see why we couldn't again, we, I think Gavin has a pretty good track record of finishing their town meetings in one night and I'd like to keep that going. Uh, still offering type people the time for a full and fair debate. Um. As you know. I am involved with the zoning of the planning board, so I stepped down as moderator, but I think given my experience and my, my legal knowledge. I like to be involved in helping to. To draft the zoning amendments as tightly or as best as possible. But I will always defer to town council because I, once again, I am not town council. And it's always good to have a number of eyes on these type of amendments because there are no perfect zoning laws anywhere. Um, but I would say, you, you know, I would advise you to move forward. You might want to touch base with the town manager. Um. And if I hear anything. That would lead you in the other direction, I'll certainly notify you, but there's nothing that comes to mind at this point.
All right, uh. We have quite a bit of other things to take up at tonight's meeting. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is at this point. And what we have to do, uh, Liz, uh. The uh.
I need you guys to make a decision on whether you want to move forward with the zoning. Um, at the April meeting because I would need to run ads in March.
Well. I might suggest that. I, I, I just don't know where we're going with all these still things that took a tremendous amount of time tonight. I wonder whether we should have a meeting on the twelfth of April. Which would be a week after the fifth. Of April. Uh, to have those uh, articles. And have the meeting for that and maybe a couple of other things if that's what the board would like to do. I just don't see how we're going to accomplish it on the fifth of April.
Go along with that.
I would say if you're going to do that, just keep it to the zoning stuff.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so while on the twelfth of the zoning.
While we're meeting, while we're making big decisions. Um.
You put in for a raise, Liz?
Yeah, me too.
Um. The Director of Health has informed me that um, the building, well, the building reopens tomorrow. And we can start having in-person meetings again. We are still limited to twenty-five people. So that being said. Um, you saw how many people were here tonight.
Yeah.
Um, and I know a lot of that was for Spruce Street, but there was still. Um, all the Adam Street stuff. And the zoning street, the zoning will probably gather a big crowd. So I don't know whether you want to meet in person or via Zoom. For one or for both of them, for one of them.
I think, I think we better do both of them, I guess.
Yeah.
We get there and then we have all these people on that phone meeting.
Mm-hmm.
On. I would make the fifth and the twelfth on Zoom unless someone has any.
No, sounds good.
The next.
But is it possible that when?
I can interject real quick. I think it's best that you do it via Zoom because if you are going to be doing it on the twelfth. I know that the selectmen alternate. I don't know if they're going to want to meet in person. You might have. You know. You know, i- if they meet at certain times, you usually will meet on the off weeks that they're not in the corner rooms. That's. Something to keep in mind. I feel that we're actually getting better and better. I know that. Bob made a, may have had a few issues with a, a few of the Zoom ghosts as Rick, but I think otherwise tonight's meeting, I think it kind of flowed.
Yeah, good.
That, that's all I have. I just wanted to share those two cents.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, on the, on the detention retention basin, uh, on St. Sullivan Way that it's continuing to go on. Uh, we, uh, it's Mentos problem. But the other, uh, the uh, family that lives there. Has filled in detention area. This controversy on how many yards of fillers been brought in there. There's also a question on the uh, on. Product on, on the uh. Ames Noel property also and, and we're going to the legal council and trying to come up with something. Do you need to add something to that, Liz?
Um, so anyway, I sent that letter to you today. Um, I can send it to town council, but. Basically their opinion. Is that it is a private matter and that the Mento brothers are not in compliance. With the store bond of management, the way it currently sits with that basin filled in. I can also tell you that. Um. I had a representative of DCR contact me. About the um. Is a ten foot wide. Um. Isment. Access easement between. Um, the property that filled in the detention basin and his neighbor, which does not appear on the plan the board approved. But then does appear on. Remember that, um, A and R plan that went from six to seven lots or seven to eight lots. In that subdivision. Um, the board said years after the um, sub, subdivision plan was approved. They did an A and R plan adding a lot. It was when they added this lot, they added this access easement to. Um, Ames Noel. Um, from what I can try to sort of figure out is that may have been part of an agreement. Um, with Mr. Sione and uh, the. The people who appealed the decision. Um, uh, their name is escaping me at the moment. Anyway, they came to an agreement. The suit got dropped. He could move forward with it and he sold it to the Mentos. But now we have this issue with the easement that isn't recorded anywhere until a month ago.
I could probably add some light to that when you get a second.
Yeah.
That was, that was, that was Alice's and, and I'm pretty sure that that died with her. That was the agreement. Until, it was just until she died, I think.
All right, because I believe somebody in her family was the one who called DCR.
Really?
Because.
I know I had the conversation with Alice. I never saw the, in writing. But that was the agree, I was pretty sure that was the agreement she had.
Because I remember you telling me that, so. That aside, you know, DCR is involved to some extent. Because they're afraid with the detention basin not functioning. Water is going to flow into the park. Um. So they were, they were going to write something up and send it to me. Um, and it's only that letter I'm going to send to town council, but. Right now they're kind of shrugging their shoulders going. It's a private matter between the Mentos and the property owner.
The problem coming forward is going to be that all those people who live on that street are not going to get in the food street. And that's a problem. I, I don't know who's, who, who, you know. And the other thing is I, I don't know what we're holding for a bond, but obviously no more money.
I, I looked it up and it was, it was pretty decent. It was a pretty decent. I, I looked it up and it was, it was pretty decent, it was a pretty decent amount of cash, and it was still in effect. I don't remember that.
Is it cash?
No, 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 it was like a tri-party agreement with a bank.
Liz, are the Mentos aware of this, and do they agree that it's their issue right now?
So the Mentos have received two emails from this office, um, and they acknowledge that it's their issue, and their concern is that the person who, whose property this is um is difficult to deal with. And.
I believe you won't let him on their property.
And he won't let him on the property, but.
And our engineer wasn't able to go on their property either.
Well, that. But it's not enough problem, and I'm sorry if his neighbor is difficult to deal with, but that's a their problem, it's not enough.
Correct, it's, it's still, it can't, the town has no, um, I don't wanna say that doesn't have a, a, a dog in the fight, but
Other than the fill part.
On it land.
Other than the fill part.
Yeah.
And the.
They, they sent documentation, it was only a hundred and eighty yards.
Yeah, but I, I, I questioned that, I mean, I looked at it, and uh, and I, I think we need to get, you know, you know, something from P M P to, to give us an idea of whether or not, without going on the property.
I asked him, and he said that it could be, it could, it would, it was a tough call, I did email him about that.
That's a pretty big, I'm looking at the, the aerial shot of it, and that's a very big pond, that even pond, uh, retention area.
Been filled in substantially, it's not, it's um, it's been filled in substantially, and this rip crap put into it, and it's, it's nowhere near what it was originally approved up on the planning board, so it doesn't, nothing that we had on the plan is what's there now.
No, and there's a large pile of dirt still out there, and um, the property owner told the D C R uh manager that um, he was contouring, I believe was the word he used.
Well.
So we'll, we'll send them another letter, but I, I, if you guys have any thoughts, let me know, I just don't know.
Oh, we can, we can, with, with town council and everything else, and this is where we end up.
Yeah.
We spent a lot of time on it.
Yeah, well, and we did, um, I did send a letter to the building commissioner and asked him to put it in the street file, letting anybody who knows, who's looking at the file, know that that particular lot is um, the store model management is not in compliance.
Um, should that, there's been rumor that that house might be sold in the meantime.
Oh, it is for sale, because there was a video on Facebook. I, I wouldn't say that unless I saw it with my own eyes, but he, there was a, the real Ted posted a video on Facebook.
Um. Liz. Where we.
They won't know what this is.
Liz, would we be in our right to essentially tell Mento that they are no longer in compliance and they need to come before?
I did, I asked them to give me their plan to become in compliance in five days, and that hasn't happened. What, what becomes tricky, and you guys can tell me what you wanna do. Um, I mean, we could tell them we're gonna take their bond and fix it, but I don't know how we do that.
You can't do it, because you can't go on the property.
Can't go on the land.
We don't, we don't have easements to it?
No, that's another problem.
No, the roadway was never accepted, so nothing ever got filed.
Uh, unless we tell D C R to go get them.
Um, yeah, I don't know that that's gonna happen anytime soon.
So we have a piece of land that doesn't work the way it was proposed, and nobody can do anything about it.
I, I s- I still suggest the fill bylaw is the, I don't know, maybe someone could take the plans and do some math, that, that, it's gotta be more than two hundred yards.
That would be my opinion.
Yeah.
So Patrick can't get on the property?
Right.
If, if you went by the, by the plans, the way it was supposed to be built, we get a rough idea of how, how big the area is, right?
Yeah, so you want me to send Patrick back up to pick a look at it?
If it works, and then we could, then we can get town council to do something about it.
All right, just move along uh on the, the uh FEMA mandatory, is it, anything you wanna say on that, Liz?
So, well, this was, um, I left this on the agenda because it was um, any proposed bylaw changes. So we've sort of already discussed that, but I need to know specifically what I sent you guys, what you want to be advertised for your hearing on the bylaw changes that were remanded back. The FEMA I can, I can do. Town council's already written it, and.
Um, do we know how it's impacting Abington residents, any major changes that we need to be aware of? I know in other towns, this probably has a bigger impact, but.
Um, I don't think it's too bad. Um, I haven't really looked at the plans, I've only got like the, the maps, the map numbers that are changing for the bylaw piece, so I haven't really looked past that. I can tell you, they're actually in two watersheds. We're in the Charles River watershed and the Cape Cod watershed, um, and the part like French's stream, I think, is the part that's in the uh Charles River watershed, that needs to get done next year, I think.
Yeah.
So, and again, that's a, a minor impact, because it's so small a piece in that watershed district. Uh, the Cape Cod one is larger.
On the uh other articles uh that we need to advertise for that hearing, uh, you, you have, pardon me, on, on page two, um, the street sign, uh, I think that needs to go in again, and if anybody has any objections, woman or not.
That, putting the address on, you mean?
Article five.
Yeah.
Is that okay? If no one says anything, I'll, I'll just go to the next one, uh, and you can go back if you want to. The sixth one, I would forget it. It's on the swimming pool, and uh it was originally.
It was gonna pass.
Oh, no, we got it, so I don't see any reason to have it in again.
We were gonna pass over it anyways, right?
Yeah.
And then uh, on the uh, article seven uh definitions, you need to put that in there because it's just a weird uses that we need to have in for the definition. Okay, so say. Uh. Article eight. Is that what you want us, wanted to stay in, that's uh uh, where they put an annual in-law affidavit. Is that all right? Um, article nine, um, that's, that's where you extend uh, the buffer areas from fif- uh, which goes from fifty foot to a hundred foot. Is that all right to say? Uh, and then uh, yeah, article ten, we need to get that out of there, because, you know, that zone doesn't exist anymore, so it is, it's temporaneous, it needs to be out. Um. And then uh, article eleven, I think, I think we should leave it in there, it, it gives us a little bit of teeth when people don't live up to their obligation when they build it. Is that all right?
We voted to pass over.
Pass over that one, Wayne.
I thought we decided uh.
Needed some wording updates.
Maybe that's what it was, uh.
It has to do with the penalties.
Yeah.
So what do you wanna do with that? Find out from town council if we can clean it up, I mean, that's.
If you get the words fixed, yeah. It's desperately needed.
Yeah, it's needed. Something needs to be done, I mean. What, what, what's your pleasure?
You want me to send it to town council?
I guess.
Yeah, see if they can clean up the wording.
Um. And article twelve.
Yep.
Leave it in.
Yep.
And article thirteen, that's the ten acres to three acres for uh all the yours, unit planning. You do that in?
Yep.
Um. Yep. Article fourteen, I know that's, that's yours, Rick, I, it, there's so much in that, that, that I wish I knew how to write one, but I, I certainly, there's a lot of things I don't really agree with, I mean, it's, it's wonderful to have eight-inch caliper trees going, as an example. Uh, I mean, the eight, you know, put them all in there and everything else, but and, and the size of trees that replace them are six inches in diameter, which are pretty big trees. Whether they live or not, I, I, that's another whole issue compared to someone that you know, once the landowner gets in there, they need to have care. Um, and the expense of six-inch caliper, six-inch diameter trees is substantial.
I'm not saying plant six-inch trees.
Yeah.
But more when they're mature, they need to at least be six-inch.
Oh, okay, well, that makes a big difference, but um, I just this, it's just so many things, wh- when you change grades and do everything else, all sorts of things happen. I, I, I like to keep canopy as much as anybody does. You know, quite frankly, on my property, I probably spent eight thousand dollars removing trees, and that's over a period of years. Uh, that too close to the house, other problems that obviously they were trees that were there when the house was built, and perhaps not trees that you would have in your front lawn necessarily.
Sounds like site plan review is required of that property.
Yeah. Thanks. But uh, you know, I, I I, I, I just think there's so much work needs to be done on that article, I, I just can't see how it.
I thought that's, thought that's why we voted to pass over it, we're gonna do some more work on it, but.
Yeah.
But it needs a lot of work, and I don't know what the right answer is now anymore. Um, so we're not doing it on this, this trip.
Um, I'd say pass over on it, I'm sorry, Rick.
There's no more to bylaw, we, we voted anyway, we're all, so that's, that's, that's really it on that, right? Did I miss anything? Uh. On the M, M B T A, uh, that you, you got a copy of it, uh, I know what it says. I, I, I don't, I just, I just cannot understand the M B T A. And, and, and the reason I can't understand it is, they've been running these trains by my office for the last year with nobody on the train. And uh, on Friday of this past week, I looked out at the parking area, they had nineteen cars in the parking lot, that, that holds almost four hundred cars, it used to be full. In addition to that, I looked this morning, and there were fifteen cars out there. And we want the train to run like there's people loaded on the train like it used to be. I, 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 I understand that they can't do anything, I guess, until they have hearings and everything else. Certainly, and, 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 and the deficit spending like, and somebody who, in the state of Massachusetts will pay for that. The taxpayers, I presume, but I, I don't know what the right answer to. I, 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 I know you have one, two, three, and four. Yes, we need, we need public transport, but until the mayor of Boston lets people go to work in Boston, no one's gonna ride the train. I, I don't know what the, I, I just, it's government at its best, ridiculous. That's all I got to say about it, what is your provision? You can go from there, what do you wanna do? We need to have that in by tomorrow, I guess.
Just, just knowing the M B T A, once you lose service, it's really hard to get it back.
And I, I agree with that, so should we keep running these trains when no one gets on them? Spending all sorts of money, it's, it's, I don't, it's insane, I, that's what the letter should be, you're all insane.
Well, I wouldn't word it like that.
No, but it probably, it, it probably, that's what we need to have people say sometimes, is, is what, what's actually wh- what needs to be done and what is being done. It, it's just, no man or woman would ever run a business like that, no.
No, but you can't, you can't say that you should run government like a business, because government does things that the, the T loses money, I mean, you know, I mean.
It's losing, it, it's been running this train, and there's no one on the train.
No, no, I understand that.
It's been a year, and then not anybody with any brain knows that this is wasting money.
I understand that, and I agree with you. I mean, uh, and, and if you look at the transit, I just saw an article by uh, a, a friend of mine owns P and B, Win Sergeant, and they're not giving money to the bus lines, but they're giving money to the T, and the bus lines are dying. You know, I mean, and Win, you love Win, Wayne, he's a real businessman, but he's trying to make his business run, but he's not getting government support, so uh, I mean, they've stopped the service on the weekends anyway, haven't they? I think so.
Yes, thank goodness, that was a couple of weeks, yeah. How come they can do that, and they have to do all this for this?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's the crux right there, they've stopped service on the weekends. You know, it's funny, the people, the people who are using the trains now are the service people, the cer- the security guards, the nurses, you know, the people like that who have no alternatives to transportation.
But the thing is, Bruce, is that four hundred cars parked in this parking lot out there, now there's nineteen.
No, I know, I understand that, I understand. I understand, from a financial point of view, yeah, you should argue that they should cut the services, because they got this huge deficit. From a human point of view, the people who use the train, those people in those fifteen cars, or nineteen cars, if you cut the service, they could be screwed. I mean, you have to balance that versus the economics of it.
I, 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 I don't argue about the fact that, that, that when we had four hundred people in that parking lot, that the train should run on the schedule they were running, and they should go back to that. And what Rick brings up, which is important, is that all of a sudden you're telling me don't have to run this train quite so often, then when you wanna have the train go more often, when it was like it used to be, then, then you can't do that, because you have to have hearings and stuff, and, and maybe they'll never be replace it. It's, it's, as I said.
You're catching, it's a catch twenty-two, really. You know that expression? I think they'd have to restore the service if the demand was there, you know? I mean, they built, they're building Route eighteen to a four-lane road, not because of the traffic that's there now, I mean, that, that it built that to, to, to cover traffic pre-pandemic. Now, sure, now if you looked at the traffic counts on eighteen, you know, I don't know whether it would support four lanes or not, but uh.
Look, you see, I mean, not only they're building at the base, but they, they're building out on Route eighteen, some another five hundred unit housing, nothing to do with the base. And, and, you know, we're worried about twelve more cars going out of a little subdivision, and it's, and it's insane, I mean, we we're, it's awful, we can't have twelve more cars a, a day on, 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 on a street in the town of Abington, but we can run another, how many cars?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, those, that big apartment complex that's a building right in front of the bridge, and right across the street from that, where the golf course is and all that, there's another proposal to go in there and add a bunch of stuff in there, too, you know, so. Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
What do you wanna do for the letter for the, for the T?
Well, you know, if you go with, with Rick says, then we should support it.
Who typed up these four responses?
I was gonna say, where, where'd that come from?
I typed him Rick's email.
Oh, from Rick's email, oh.
Whatever you people wanna do is fine with me. I can't deal with the government.
We're gonna have traffic back at normal levels in a couple of months.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, yeah.
The mayor's going to Washington, maybe he will consent about the board.
The mayor's going to Washington. Maybe he won't concern about the boss.
Those trains were filled out, maxed out every day.
That's correct.
And it's gonna be like that again soon.
Let's hope it is. Uh, you know, I think it's gonna take longer than that to get back to that.
There's a lot of people that'll never go back to Boston. They don't work out of their homes, and it'll be a long time before we fill them up again, but it'll, it will happen.
To, to agree. I, I, just as a side thing, I ha- I put calls out to, I don't know how many different professional, big engineering firms doing mechanical, electrical plumbing. Couldn't get callbacks from anybody because they're all re- working remotely. Talked with a couple of bosses, and it's, it goes absolutely insane. There's just no way to run a business with everybody. Nobody's being supervised. They're all working at home because it just, it just won't work. You got, we gotta all be in the same building to, to make, you know, to be, to be a professional company.
I agree.
It's what would happen to our kids. I'm, I'm getting education for over a year, Shane, and that's what they want, I don't lose over the next period of their lifetime. Anyway.
Do you want to send it in?
Send the, send the letter.
Okay.
Go to what?
I do agree with Wayne, but I see the other side of it too. Good luck getting it back if you get rid of it. No, I mean, I agree with Wayne, but, you know, I see the other side of it.
Robin Savino, I, I don't, I, that.
Before we move to our, we still have Rick's, um, suggested zoning.
Oh, I can go through those very, very, very quickly.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is more just to take temperature for the board. The first is, um, if we want to restrict, um, multifamily housing on Route 18, my fear is we're gonna see a lot more of these six and seven-unit townhouses kind of slipped in sideways on these units, taking commercial land, turning into residential. Because a lot of those lands are, are narrow, long and narrow. And I don't know if we want to say, all right, you, where, you can right still.
Yeah, I, I don't know why these, uh, builders are putting these self-storage buildings on high visibility places. I mean, that's, that's where you.
Because people, people require them. They're moving into these small places, and they're putting all these things in these short places. I mean, they're hot.
For sure, but why do they have to be visible? I mean, that, like, like you said, they should be.
Well, if they're on a side street, nobody knows they're there, I guess, be the answer to that. I, I know what you're saying. Why can't they put it back in the wood?
I just lost part of my screen. What was the third one?
Infrastructure along property lines?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
The infrastructure along property line?
Oh, yeah. So, um, you see this on that new commercial building on 18 that, um, right, uh, as you're heading up to Cream and those developments, there's a 10, 15-foot retaining wall right on the property line. I just kind of feel like these, these walls, the road beds that start right on the property lines, I think there should be setbacks. I think, you know, we should, we have everything else requires setbacks off the property line. Driveways have to be set off the property line. Why do we allow 10, 12, 15-foot retaining walls to be built on the property line?
Well, I, you know, obviously you make the land less valuable as there, that's your edge of your property line. It's almost like putting a fence up. When you put a fence up, you're gonna tell them that they should be five feet off the line? I mean, who mows the lawn up to the fence line? I just think it, I, I know where you're coming from, Rick, but, you know, if, you know, I, sometimes a wall is, is better to look at than, you know, I, I don't know. I just, I see where you're coming from, but I, I don't necessarily agree with you.
I mean, that, those are pretty common, unfortunately. You know, it's just not, Route 18 in Abington, you see that a lot of places.
Yeah, we're, we've done a number of developments where, you know, you have a 3-to-5-foot road bed right on the property line.
Yeah, yeah. It's not just Abington. There's a lot of towns in there.
Yep. Uh, and what was the fourth one? I'm, like I said, I'm sorry, my screen's kind of cut up. One more time, I'm sorry.
Structures facing streets. Required structures with lane entrance funds facing.
Oh, okay, yep. Um, again, this is the problem where we, having buildings built sideways essentially. And so we get to see the, uh, you know, the small windows, the utility boxes, the, um, all the small stuff in the front of the buildings facing another direction.
Or having utilities not being on the street. Boy, I'll tell you, I would, I would love to see that happen everywhere. E- especially in these little neighborhoods where they stick all these utilities out where everybody can see it. That is an awful view, especially, I know the, when you're looking at that last one, they just built on Route 18 by, you know, the fire station at that side of the street.
Yep.
Horrible.
You know, I'm also looking at that Summer Street one we did last month, where the main entrance is facing the parking lot, and we get the side and it's, it's nothing. So, I'm just thinking, whatever side is facing the street needs to have some curb appeal.
Yeah, that's the other, other question is, if you live there, do you want to look out at the highway where you're on the side yard, not?
Well, there, 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 I know there's some, because I was just funny, I was just reading about this someplace where they, you can't put your utilities out. They have to go in the back. You know, your power, everything, it's got to go to the back of the house. Uh, so it's, it is done elsewhere for, for the idea of the keeping a streetscape that, you know, not, not everybody's looking at these horrible utilities.
Well, what's even worse than that is that people are putting the, uh, the, uh, uh, electric panels on the front roof, and then they have the big service box that leaves the house that goes to the pole on the, right in the front, right in the front of the house.
So if you like it, we can, I can flesh it out some more.
I'd like it. It should be something that just gives them the direction as to, you know, you know, you gotta take this into consideration. What are you gonna do with those utilities? You just can't put them there. You're gonna do some kind of screening where you, you know, blends in, you disappears, not, not, not in landscape value, but in maybe some built-out, something built around it or in front of it, or if it has to be there for, or it has to be on the side.
Yep.
But I think that to do mi- visual minimal impact is where, is what we should, need to address about it.
All right, so I'll work on a couple of those.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm including the multifamily housing and the structure facing streets?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Releasing remaining funds for zoning review consultant, what is that?
So we had $25,000 in a revolving fund, not a revolving fund, in the account, um, to pay our zoning consultants, and we, I think it's like 14,000 we have left. And money is tight this year, so I didn't know if we wanted to release that money or not. It's an old article. It's an old article. I'm sorry.
No, we're there. What we, we, I think we got $20,000 in that thing and, and.
It's about 14.
Huh?
We spent about 11 between Dan and the students.
Right, instead of spending, what the town was gonna spend was close to $200,000.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not our money at this point. I, 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 I've said mostly that only.
You guys are okay with letting it go back into the general fund?
Could use a new.
On all the coins, you want to hold out $3,000 in case you have to do something with zone?
Then what?
I have no idea.
Other than that, I'd love to have a zoning map that was legible.
That's a good one.
That is the worst thing. Not even street names on it.
Like it has, I've, uh, actually got a, um, an inquiry into OCPC.
Yeah, see what, see what OCPC charges for that, and then we'll make that decision next month.
Andrew Vidal, he's your guy.
Yep, yep. All right, so the map. MNC, okay.
I think we have a vote on a filing fee for bill permit.
$400?
$100?
Make that motion. Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
And the Stormwater Management Revolving Fund. We certainly need to do something about that.
Yep.
I just don't know what the figure is.
$3,000, Wayne?
No, because you, you build a detention area, the town takes the whole thing over. What does it cost us every year to maintain that detention area?
How much are we turning, how much are we turning back from the plan?
Please?
How much were we turning back from the plan that wasn't used?
11? $11,000?
That's on the zoning.
On the zoning?
Yeah, but I, I don't think we could.
I, I don't know how you're ever gonna create enough money to maintain these things forever. You're just not gonna be able to do it.
I mean, in other words, what we have to do is you have to charge somebody something for a detention area when he, he, or she puts it in there. And then the interest off that money maintains it. So, if you need $1,000 a year to maintain it, you probably need at least, I don't know, you figure out what the interest rate is. Is it 5%?
Yeah, if you're lucky. If you're lucky.
And you know as well as I do what, what's gonna happen with that revolving fund.
Yeah, it's gonna go into the general fund.
Yeah. We haven't got much.
They set it up specifically for that purpose and they can't.
Are they?
And John Stone's very much in favor of this.
Right.
So he would be, I mean, the, he, he actually could be the one, um, managing it. You know what I mean?
Manage it. What he needs to do is give us a figure of what he thinks he needs to manage a detention area of a certain size. And then we need to figure out what the interest off that money is. Figure at, at 5%, which is high today, maybe not tomorrow, but, uh, and then see what we come up with.
Okay.
Not like I'm trying to run you guys along here, but.
So very quickly, my friend, Mr. Federico, what are we doing?
I don't think we're gonna do anything tonight.
Um, let me jump in there for a second. I know you don't want to keep this meeting going. It's something we already did and already signed. If you looked at the plan.
What's the question?
That was the plan you guys wanted to see because the, um.
Well, now that I've seen it, I re- I remember. It's already been approved. It's already been approved. It's got three signatures on it.
Right, right. So he's, he's good to go with, um, getting a signature on his building permit. The drainage was the issue, and when you got last.
Right, as long as it can.
I didn't think that the road was where it's supposed to be.
All right, so that's the next question. He thought that was all resolved, and I got a snippy email from him about that. So you know the grandfathered lot? That needs to be on. Did you guys, I can't remember now if you determined.
We did not.
You didn't, that it was a public way, right?
But if we do this roadway improvement, then he has his front.
But it's not a public way, and that's what he needs.
Not a public way. It's a roadway improvement.
Right, so you guys needed to determine whether the roadway in front of his grandfathered lot was good enough for him to access the lot, to be called a roadway, I guess. So that part we can throw off till next month because I'm supposed to be getting an as-built plan. From I'll, I'll be now that, now that it's in.
Right, I, I, I would, I would not agree to that until the other ones built.
Okay.
That's what I, my opinion, but I'm only one person.
So we're gonna wait for the as-built plan?
If you want, that's, um, but can he get a signature on the building permit for the house that is included in the, the plan I sent you?
What's he gonna do for bond for all this?
Oh, that's right. You'd have to do a covenant or a cash bond, right?
Yes, I, I don't think we ever come up with a figure on it, did we?
No.
Music stat basically extending the roadway with all the drainage and everything else, right? Gotta stick a house in there without.
What, put two houses in? One is shown on that plan, and the other one is that grandfathered lot to the left of it.
The Albert Corliss, Corliss lot?
Yes, he ended up buying that lot.
Yeah, I couldn't see, doesn't come before us anymore.
Grandfathered. Did it ever, did it ever meet at 60 by 120? Did that ever meet zoning?
We don't want to get it with the night.
No, that, that, if it's grandfathered, it's grandfathered. That's up to the building inspector.
And the building inspector has said it's grandfathered. His problem, his issue is with the roadway. And town council weighed in with what was a road. You guys got a letter from Patrick. And I can't remember what you decided.
We didn't.
Okay.
Oh, well.
Well, I think the problem was it was these two things were going on simultaneously, and at the time, he had pulled the drainage out, moved it back, and and now he's found the easement that he can actually shed water onto that property and through the drainage easement.
We'll bring it up at the next meeting if that's okay.
That's fine with me.
Liz, while I'm thinking of it, that Form A we approved to, oh no, did we approve the Form A with the four lots, A, B, C, D, E?
Yes.
Well, we'll sign that for you, so we'll have to come in.
Yeah, last time I just had Wayne sign, because you only need one signature to record. It's up to you guys. If you all want to come in, that's fine.
No. Well, someone can sign it.
Um, I should be back on Friday.
Oh, if you want to Jamaica?
I wish.
All right. So on the list of, of minutes to approve, which you have the list in front of you, I went over all of it. I, I, I made some, most of them were, were just top, top, you know, any statement. Just, uh, little notes that, that didn't change anything that was written in there, and, and Liz has it. But a motion to approve all of them unless someone has some, one of them that they want to exclude, and then we can talk about it.
Motion to approve all. Second. With Wayne's changes. With Wayne's here.
Any?
All on Wayne.
Any, any other discussion?
I don't know. I read them all. I did, this afternoon.
Uh, on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. All right.
All is known unanimous. Okay. Is, uh.
Did you have any comments on the March agenda? For the zoning board of appeals?
I don't, I don't, I don't think we saw it.
I didn't see anything for. It wasn't, I don't think it was in our packet list.
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't see anything. Looking at this Federico thing, I missed that meeting, because Kathy and I were in England that, that meeting. That brings back good memories. Four years ago. Yeah, we were in England, in Wales.
Wow.
Yeah. I'm gonna go back as soon as we get our shots.
Anything, uh, anything else that you thought for the meeting?
I think that's it. So we're gonna do, um,
To April. So, so he's gonna get, he's gonna get his ass built for the lot, and then he's gonna come up with some sort of a, a bond to, for the roadway improvement, right? Federico?
He's all done. So the as-built, the as-built is for the completed road.
Oh, it's already all done?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I get it.
But I, we'd need a minimum of 25,000, I believe, while he puts the house in, right?
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, because you guys don't go lower than 25.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to adjourn will be in order.
Make that motion.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. All right.